Six o'clock here. Oh, you went short there, Pastor. You've got one more minute if you want. So just while we're waiting, you can't start a meeting earlier. It's a violation of the Brown Act for those who might have not come to a meeting previously. This is, we want to make sure we do everything by the book. It's longest minute. We should have done a moment of silence. All right, we have hit that mark. So I will call this regular scheduled meeting to order. If you'll all join in the flag, please. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Good evening, everyone. Let's do a roll call and declarations of conflicts, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes and no.
Councilmember Nazrati?
Yes and no.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes and no.
Vice Mayor Franco?
I'm here and no.
Mayor Bublak?
Here, yes. So if anybody's looking at the agenda, Vice Mayor graciously came home early from Long Beach, so I'm sure it's in a nice hot weather she was wanting to come to. And I don't have any declarations of conflict. Approval agenda is posted or amended?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nazrati?
Yes.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Franco?
Yes.
Mayor Bublak?
Yes. Pass is five zero. There are no proclamations, recognitions, appointments, announcements, presentations, and/or briefings. Moving on to public participation. Public participation is a time set aside for members of the public to directly address the city council on any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council and to address the council on any item on today's agenda, including the consent calendar. You'll be allowed five minutes for comments if you wish to speak on an item. Just so we all understand that something recently happened in the nation and the Supremes made a decision. That is not something that we are able to make a decision on. It's not a policy. It's not something we can do. Since most of you probably aren't aware of how this works, I'm happy to give one or two of you opportunity to compile. Each of you, we get the five minutes. Typically, you're not allowed to talk on this, but since you came all this way and you don't know how this works, I'm giving you that opportunity. But I'll start with the cards that I got in advance, and that would be our Turlock librarian, Ms. Mendonza.
This is the most I've spoken to in a long time. So my name is Karina. I'm the Turlock librarian. We have a new program starting. It's called Virtual Author Talk Series. With the pandemic, we realized that we actually, people are wanting virtual programs because they don't have to drive anywhere. They want to be able to have a program, participate, socialize in the comfort of their own home. So we partnered with a company that offers virtual book, like book clubs. And the first one, it starts in July. It is The Henna Artist. The Henna Artist is a very big book. It was one of Reese Witherspoon's book club picks. So July 7th at six o'clock, from the comfort of your living room, you can watch her speak. When you register for the program, you can submit your questions, which I like. So it's kind of like you still have that interaction. If that time doesn't work for you, you can still register, still ask your question. Everything is recorded. The company that provides it provides also this type of series for corporations. So there's actually a lot of good personal development books involved as well. So July 14th, it is Getting Things Done: The Art of Stress-Free Productivity, which I'm interested in because I think that would be wonderful. Highly recommend everyone else to do it. It's July 14th at nine. And as we all know, the digital divide is real in this town. So to combat that, and if you still want to do this, we have Home Connectivity Kits. So you can check out a Chromebook, your own little personal hotspot that you can check out. Check it out for three weeks completely free. Basically, you could do what you want, just make sure it's in good condition and bring it back. If you have a computer and you just need Wi-Fi, we also have checkoutable hotspots. We are slowly working in a program. So we do have adult programs, except they're filling up fast. Every other month, we do a paint program in the middle of the day. I try it. If I can do it, anyone else can do it, although my paintings do not look like what it's supposed to, but it's still a lot of fun. Highly recommend it. You don't have to have an art degree. It's just fun. And then next month, we are launching a bunch of teen programs, including You Got This. It is a four series in person, Learn How to Play the Ukulele. And we provide the ukuleles. You can take it home with you so that you can practice. And if you don't want to be a part of this program or you're not a teenager, we do have checkoutable ukulele kits that you can check out. And that's everything going on.
Great. Thank you so much. Good to see you. John? Yes, sir.
I just want to make a quick comment. You know, the people that are here tonight, this is what America is about. They can voice their opinion and all that kind of good stuff. We're not always going to agree with everything that anybody says, but there's countries all over the world, they throw you in jail, they shoot you, they put you, you know, just run you down and everything else. And I hope we don't ever, you know, get so bad in this country that we can't at least have people's opinions to do it because we're not all going to agree with everything and everything like that. So we just hope that at least you can, you know, say your voice and say your opinion. So anyhow, my things tonight, I said, you know, there was a guy over in the Bay Area. He used to have a thing about there ought to be a law. I think his name was Joe Semidion or something like that. And every year, he would have people write in and he would, and they say, what is something, a law that you want to change or something like that? And so there was all sorts of different things, and some of them he got enacted and some of them he didn't. But I always, this is my, there ought to be a law. My, there ought to be a law is that, you know, where people plant trees in their houses. You know, I got a neighbor next door to me that's got a huge 150-foot tree and branches have fallen off. It's wiped out his roof at one time and all this kind of good stuff. And now I have to spend, I've already spent at least $1,000 chopping off limbs from him. So his tree doesn't, limb doesn't crash into my roof and destroy my house. I realize there is no law that I know of that I can force him to, you know, pay his spare share because he doesn't want to do it. My neighbor on the other side was more than willing when he had overhanging trees that were hanging down and everything like that was able to do it. So that's my, there ought to be a law. He also has, you know, has three giant redwoods right on the boundary pushing out the fence that we both share, and it's going to fall down real soon. Now, you think he's going to pay for any of that? Nah, whatever. So there ought to be a law for that. And the other thing I have to say, I'm disappointed that you guys haven't come up with a climate action plan. Everybody in the state, we're going to go to net zero and we're going to do that. I'm all for it because you know what? I can promise you, I'm in negative net zero already, the way I live my life, the plants I have, the trees and shrubs and the way I live. I just do it because that's just what I do. But the idea that we're going to, you know, put a bubble over California or Turlock or Sacramento or LA when we get to net zero is just cruel and stupid. You know, it'll help, but unless you can get everybody in the world, because it's everybody, the whole globe, unless you can get them and the billions of poor people who don't have a chance of doing something, none of this stuff will ever, will ever happen. Now, I'm just, of course, kidding you about having a climate action. I'm all for doing things energy efficiently and shade trees and all that kind of good stuff, anything that makes sense that we can reduce, you know, energy costs and help out. And then finally, I had a comment about the roads program. I was talking to the city manager a couple, few months ago, and I was asking, because he was new on the job and, you know, what he thought about it. He said, yeah, we're going to do this. And he thought it was good and all that. And then I asked him, the question I asked him, I said, well, when is my road going to get done? Now, he didn't say anything. He just gave me a wry grin because I know it is, I'm going to be pushing up two lifts before it'll ever do it. But the only thing I want to point out, just like everything else in this country, everything is coming to a collision. It's falling off the cliff. It doesn't matter what budgets, deficits, and everything else. It's all falling off a cliff, and we're always going to be trying to catch up. And you guys aren't going to catch up unless you find some more money. And where's that money going to come from? And all that type of thing. So I just always want to realize to people that we have let, you know, everything in this country run down and, I'm a practical guy. I'm not a Republican. I'm not a Democrat. I'm a policy guy. So, you know, if we need roads and bridges and sewers and solar panels and all that kind of good, that's fine. Let's get it. But when you have people saying that the rich people are only the ones who are going to pay for all this stuff, and we're not going to have to do anything, we can continue living our nice lives and flying all over the place and everything else like that and still run massive budget deficit, there's something wrong with that. Thank you.
Thank you. So I have a lot here, and as I said, one or two of you guys. So if you guys talk amongst yourselves real quick, and the last person before you guys figure out who's going to do this, Lori Smith has an item about the museum.
I'm here to give an update on the museum. Some people probably don't even know we have a museum, so now you know. We were closed for two and a half years during COVID, but we decided to use that time for a total refurbishing. So if you've been there before, come because it's all different now. If you haven't been there, there's a lot to see. It's still a work in progress, but our goal is to keep the exhibits changing so that when you come back, there'll be something new to do. It's totally free. We run the museum 100% with volunteers. The downside of being closed that long is that many of our volunteers, due to various reasons, are no longer able to volunteer. So we're looking for volunteers, too. We used to be open three days a week, but now we are down to only Saturdays from 10 to 2:00. If you think you would like to volunteer, we'd love to have you. You can volunteer as much or as little as you want, and no experience is necessary. If that hasn't enticed you to come in and take a look, maybe this will. We will be serving free ice cream this Saturday during the parade. So the address is 108 South Center. Thank you.
Awesome. Free ice cream. All right. And I think there was one other name here. Vanita? Where is she at? There you go, young lady.
Mine is going to be sold out.
Okay. Okay, Mel, I'll get you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, public. Recently, I had received a donation of $260 for TNR work, and I just wanted to report where that money went. $112 went for a trap. $90 went to a spay. $30 went for a care package for four kittens that unfortunately I was caring for when a female had her kittens inside a trap. $30 went for transport for kittens. And I'm absolutely begging you, I want to continue TNR work. You would be amazed how many diseases that families are getting illnesses just from taking in kittens. Maybe they don't know. Maybe they're not from a farm. But just a couple of those are roundworms, hookworms, ticks, ringworm, and scabies. If you've never seen ringworm and scabies, I have personally seen those cases. They're awful, and they take a very long time to get rid of. People don't understand when they're taking in kittens from out of the street that they are bringing in these things to their home. The way to stop that is through TNR. It can absolutely be stopped here. I've already done six cats. Fight with the help of Animal Control. They need money, please. Please, I'm begging you to allow me to continue TNR, and I'll allow the rest of my time by one of the young ladies here. Thank you.
Mr. Treeweiler? I'm sorry, guys, there's two others that are like the fabric of our agendas here. Mr. Treeweiler, please. I say one thing, and then I just keep moving.
Mayor and council staff and Turlock citizens, good to see a lot of people here today. It's too bad we don't have a lot of people here every meeting. I'm going to talk on the homeless issue here in Turlock tonight. What would Jesus say if he were to walk into this council meeting tonight? Probably this. Jesus blesses the righteous, not for feeding the poor, but for feeding him. But they cannot recall the event. Lord, when did we see you hungry and feed you, or thirsty and give you something to drink? Jesus replies, whenever you did, whatever you did for one of the least of these brothers of mine, you did for me. By contrast, the wicked were surprised, but in the opposite manner. Lord, where did you see, where did we see you hungry or thirsty or a stranger or needing clothes or sick or in prison and did not help you? Jesus replies, I tell you the truth. Whatever you did not do for one of the least of these, you did not do for me. Here's what we have with the people in Turlock. It is money they trust. It is money that the people, many people in Turlock trust. Oh, I have to have a bigger house, or I've got to have a new car, or I must have new clothes. Yes, Turlock has many hypocritical people who are only concerned about themselves and their own selfishness. For the first time in the history of Turlock, we have plenty of money to help the poor and needy in our city. I hope the people on this council will stop being hypocrites and do something for the poor and needy of our city. Turlock has the potential to have the least number of homeless in the county and maybe even the entire valley. My sister wanted to leave just a short message. She's renovating the shelter, the man's shelter, and she's had to, the contractor wants the people out of the shelter. So that means we have an additional 43 to 49 homeless who don't have a place to go for another week until they get the construction. They're redoing the sprinkler systems. They're redoing electrical. They're doing a lot of work in the shelter, and that's the reason why. Jesus bless the righteous, not for feeding the poor, but for feeding him. But they cannot recall the event. Lord, when did we see you hungry and feed you, or thirsty and give you something to drink? Jesus replies, whenever you did for one of the least of my brothers, you did for me. By contrast, the wicked are surprised, but in the opposite manner. Lord, when did we see you hungry or thirsty or a stranger or needing clothes or sick or in prison and did not help you? Jesus replies, I tell you the truth. Whatever you did not do for one of the least of these, you did not do for me. And I request that we pull item 5D for discussion. Thank you.
And Mr. Breigroom? And I believe that's it. And then we have the two that you guys have designated.
Mayor, I don't think we have the legal authority to limit people's speech during public participation.
Do you want me to read it out loud again? I'm happy to read it out loud again.
The, no, the government code section, that the public says, I'd for member of the public to address the city council on any item of interest to the public. That's within the subject matter jurisdiction, sure, but everything is under our jurisdiction if you live in the city. Being a woman in the city of Turlock is a matter of jurisdiction.
One of the things we don't do is we don't do a lot of applause and things. We're trying to keep it professional here, just because we're having a difference of opinion here on understanding of legal. I'm happy to ask our attorney real quickly before we have Mr. Breigroom.
Why don't we have Mr. Breigroom talk? Well, if you want to now.
That's fine.
The same entity, the California State Legislature, that has jurisdiction over the issue that I see many signs about, also said, as Councilmember Larson read, that there's an opportunity to address a city council on matters within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body. I think despite Councilmembers Larson's efforts to broaden that term, I mean, it's pretty clear what that means, which is, it means that matters that the city council can take some action on that is meaningful. So I know that the city of Turlock has, you know, often not had matters spoken to at its meeting that the mayor or the council determined were outside the subject matter jurisdiction. So I think it's within the council's authority to make that determination, or the mayor is the chair.
Come on up, Mr. Breigroom. Your turn, sir.
Can I ask for clarification prior to?
Can we just let Mr. Breigroom do it in the mall? Please, you're already up here, sir. Go ahead.
I'm going to get a lot of exercise.
I know, right?
Back and forth. Yeah, yeah. Okay. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, and city staff. Turlock Municipal Code is very clear, specifically stating that, I quote, "The Development Services Department shall review the development agreement every 12 months after the date of the agreement is entered into. The Planning Commission and City Council shall conduct a public hearing at which the property owner shall demonstrate good faith compliance with the terms of the agreement. The burden of proof on such issues shall be upon the property owner. The City Council, upon the recommendation of the Planning Commission, shall determine whether or not the property owner has complied in good faith with the terms and conditions of the agreement." End of quote. Through public document requests, I have learned that last November, there was a meeting between city staff and some of the principals of Natural Healing Center. This meeting was arranged by NHC 2, and I quote, "We look forward to updating you regarding our project." End of quote. This is not what Turlock Municipal Code requires. It has been 21 months since NHC signed the development agreement in which they were required at least 15 months ago to start operating and making payments to the city, which currently were total a minimum of $390,000. More than enough monies to pay for the additional vehicles the police department wanted in this budget cycle and the $55,000 pickup that is on the agenda tonight. We all know the reason why NHC has not met the required objectives is because of the illegal activities of their founder, Helios Dayspring, and the chaos his legal problems caused his company that he stated he fears will collapse in his absence when he goes to prison. Turlock Municipal Code goes on to state, and I quote, "If the city council finds and determines that the property owner has not complied in good faith with the terms and conditions of the agreement, the city council shall order the property owner to cure the default within 60 days. If the property owner fails to do so, the city council may modify or terminate the agreement." End of quote. Clearly, the authority to make these determinations and potential modifications to the development agreement lies solely with the five of you. Yet city staff has again not followed Turlock Municipal Code, and it appears that they took it upon themselves to determine if NHC was meeting the terms and conditions of the development agreement and to allow NHC to not meet those terms, including making minimum payments to the city. Madam Mayor and council members, you all took an oath of office to uphold the laws of this land. You also took a second oath stating, and I quote, "You will be exemplary in obeying the laws of the land and the regulations of the city," and that you do recognize the election results as a symbol of public faith, and you accept it as a public trust. To be held so long as you serve the citizens of Turlock, you will constantly strive to achieve these objectives and ideals." End of quote. Modified a little bit. Turned some words around. That didn't change the meaning. I call upon the five of you to be leaders of our town and individuals who will keep the public faith in which you were entrusted by keeping your oath of office, no matter if it is convenient, easy, or not. Madam Mayor, as a former police officer, you took a similar oath, and you know the importance of following the law. I call upon you to be the leader of this, I can't speak, to be. I call upon you to be the leader of this council and to demand city staff follow Turlock Municipal Code and immediately set up the required public hearing. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Mr. Pitchlockis, sir.
Yeah, question for clarification. So I understand that a Supreme Court ruling is not within the jurisdiction. We cannot make rulings here at the council, but we do have ability to make proclamations or to do advocacy for reform of laws, and it would be within the purview of our residents to make appeals to their council for their positions. I just, I worry that this is jeopardizing this city, putting us in a position of liability of a form of censorship and free speech. There is, we have in the past advocated for reform of laws pertaining, or made actions to make reform of laws pertaining to homelessness as a council. We have taken a position that we will be leaders in legislative reform at the state level here. So it would fall within our purview to, for members of the public to be asking of us to be doing things that are above the immediate local jurisdiction, to ask for those types of things.
And Councilmembers, if you don't mind me jumping on it, and just like the former gentleman said, this is, this is the right, this is designed by our country to provide a platform. If you guys come up in here and want to share your opinion, and this is your platform to do so, to yours all elected, you'll do it respectfully, and you'll do it kindly, and you'll do it with a tone that does not make anybody here concerned of their own safety, right? Because that's what this is designed for, and we have personnel here that want to make sure that your rights are being protected, our rights are being protected, and everyone's safety is being protected. But you have a right as an American to speak to your elected officials, in my opinion, and I believe that that is what the California Government Code is talking about. Yes, we do have a right to write resolutions, policy proclamations, declare tomorrow a holiday in terms of the decision in the jurisdiction of Turlock. So that's how I read it, and that's what we're designed to do as policymakers and really protectors of your guys' opportunity to address here, but respectfully, okay?
Mr. Pitchlockis.
Well, I think I have two reactions to those comments. One is that, as we sometimes say in the law, they prove too much. If the limitation was not a limitation and the council took the position that anything that could pass a proclamation on, which is probably only limited by the imagination by the elected officials, then the prohibition doesn't mean anything that the legislature put into place to allow the city to limit comment to things over which the city has subject matter jurisdiction. I think this issue, whether there's, whatever you call it, pro-life, pro-choice, whatever, you know, I know there's a lot of different headlines about it. It is a classic example of something that you have no subject matter jurisdiction over. So that's my first comment. My second comment is that I would, yeah, the council should, whatever, however you apply it, it must be applied equally. You can't pick and choose. You know, you have a number of young people here tonight who feel very strongly about an issue, and you can't not have them talk because you don't like the topic where something else had came before you that you had more sympathy for the group on a kind of an equal matter of you having no subject matter jurisdiction. I mean, you know, we could, if we took a recess, I'm sure I could come up with better examples, but, you know, the level of the national defense budget, you have no subject matter jurisdiction over. So if a group came here who wanted to support Ukraine and spend money in Ukraine and increase the US defense budget, well, you know, you don't have any subject matter jurisdiction over that. So, but it, you know, again, I mean, this is the, this is what lawyers like to say. It's the call of the council. The legislature, the group that does have subject matter of the council. The legislature, the group that does have subject matter jurisdiction over the issue that's before, you know, that many people are here for tonight, has provided local governments the ability to only listen to things that are subject to their subject matter jurisdiction.
And that's fine. It's a council decision. I just want for the record that this is the first time since I've been elected in 2018 that we have ever limited public participation from talking about cannabis to having people come up here, and when we were passing ordinance such as that, and started talking about the biblical authority that is applied over here, that this would be the first time since I've been elected that we have not allowed everybody to, that wants to, come up and speak during part, public participation.
And while we're kind of sitting here taking over the bully puppet, and it's the people's time, this is the first time in 50 years that the Supreme Court has made a statement like this, and that's not something we have control over. And I actually thought I was being, you know, thoughtful in saying not, hey, thanks for, you know, having your opportunity out there, but here we go, you guys can't speak. I thought a couple of them, we all know that the values are all aligned on the, as I read, so that should be okay for them to, a couple people to come up and speak, and we, we get the, the thought of this. So I would ask, sir, that you, you look like you had done the organizing. If you would help me start with one, please.
Hello, everyone. My name is Gianna. Today I'm speaking on behalf of the repeal of Roe v. Wade. This is going to negatively impact people with the uterus everywhere, and I strongly urge you all to not further restrict access in Turlock. If Turlock wants to see a decline in the number of abortions, I urge you to advocate for and put in place more comprehensive sex education in our schools, and free and accessible birth control. This is the only thing that has been shown to reduce rates of abortion, not abortion bans. Abortion bans eliminate safe abortions. They will still happen. If you're pro-life, I urge you to put your money, actually, the city's money, so all of our money, where your mouth is. Fund local comprehensive sex education and accessible birth control. Lastly, I want to see representation on my city council. Most of you do not have my best interests in mind, and are making decisions that affect me and my future, not yours. Amy, I ask that you don't make young people feel intimidated to participate in local politics. This is our future as much as yours. Thank you.
Remember, we're going to, we're going to refrain from the applause and everything. This is part of, this is part of government and how this works. If you could help, please, we all agree that we, we're going to hear things we like and don't like, but let's just kind of keep it civil, please. Yes, sir.
All right. First off, I want to say congratulations on becoming the, you were an Olympian. I know that was pretty cool. I saw it in Turlock Journal. And also, I just, I'm disappointed by the fact that you're limiting the amount of speakers we have. I feel we all deserve the right to speak about whatever we want. I've heard many people come out here speaking very outlandish things about things that the city has no control over. So the fact we're now being limited is a very, I think, very sad, and it's quite a stain upon this, this, most local government and Turlock, the city. I think this, it's a real tragedy. And also, I just, I think there are local ways, like she mentioned before, we can do, Texas was terrible in our school districts, and with Interlock. I, I went through it. I just graduated in the year 2021. And most of these people, they're either still in high school or recent graduates, and like, I went to school with most of them. They're all voting age, and we will be sure our voices get heard one way or another, whether that's here in the council or through the election boxes. So I would like just to, for everyone to be aware of that, and I want, I just, I just want your voice, your voices to represent ours. So we, we have strong feelings, as you can all see by our signs and our, our willingness to all come out here and show our support for this. So we just want to be acknowledged by our local council members and our mayor to see that we, we matter and our voices are being heard, because young people normally feel very disenfranchised by politics. I know, I, I've come to a few of these, and they're intimidating to come to speak to you guys. You're all in your nice fancy little things, your names on your desks, and it, it all looks very official, and we young people don't, don't do official things that often. So I wanted to say thank you for all coming out. I genuinely appreciate this. Vaya very much appreciates this. I know I was giving credit earlier, but it was really all Vaya's idea, so thank you to her for sending all this up, and for helping all this run smoothly. It means the world to all of us. And there will also be another thing. On this Friday, we are doing a walk for Downtown City.
Am I correct? Downtown?
Yeah, Downtown, we're doing a little walk, this Friday, next Friday, I should say. So I'd like to see you guys out there, actually, be able to talk to us, figure us out more. Since we're limited speaking here, I'd like to see some of you come out and actually talk to us, young folks, and see our opinions, because I know our signs say very, some of them say stuff. Well, like me personally, I'm pretty conservative, but I think the fact that Roe v. Wade was overturned, though I morally disagree with it, I want the women to have that choice, and California will protect it, and I want to hear that Turlock will do all that in its power to protect it. Because though I don't agree with the fact that women should get abortions, I want them to have the choice, because I think we deserve the independence to make those decisions for ourselves. And the fact that that's being taken away by so many states and local governments and such are just straight up rejecting this right for the potential of to do something, I think is terrible, and I think the government does not have that particular right to take away from us. I think we should all be, we, all of us here are basically adults, and if we need those services, we should have access to them, and they should be being provided to us if we feel the need to use these services. And I think it's just simply ridiculous that they are being taken away from us. Thank you for listening, council members and mayor. I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Move on to motion reading, all ordinances on the agenda except by title. You have a motion?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Roll the roll, please.
Number five, five D.
Yes. Consent, right after this, sir.
No, sorry.
That's all right.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nazrati?
Yes.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Franco?
Yes.
Mayor Boobla?
Yes. Passes five zero. Consent calendar is, item D, David, has been asked to be polled. Is there any other item, council members? Nothing? Okay. Should I make a motion?
Motion to approve as amended.
Just D, it's being polled.
Second, second.
His was, it said it was life, so I didn't, yeah. Call the roll then, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nazrati?
Yes.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Franco?
Yes.
Mayor Boobla?
Yes. Passes five zero. All right. Consent, as we passed, five D, we have local emergency. So Ms. Hedy?
Mr. Treewiler.
Mr. Treewiler, can you just let us know what your, your question was, sir? Is that all right? You asked us to poll D?
Yes, I have. It's written out here.
Okay. If you want to come up, we'll start, we'll open it public first, so that you can address this topic, and then we'll go backwards so we can get everything figured out, sir.
Okay, staff, Turlock citizens, council. Milt Treewiler, Turlock citizen. I was born here in Turlock. I had a small business here for 40 years, and I just don't see why there's a need for this emergency declaration. It's not necessary now because we have the money and the resources to care for our homeless population in Turlock. This declaration was ratified on March 16th, 2021, over one year and three months ago. We now have the money and the resources to resolve our homeless issues. Here's a question. How much easier is it to help the homeless when they're camping in one location, or possibly two locations, rather than scattered out all over the city of Turlock? We have the money and the resources to do what is right for our homeless population. Housing First will provide some kind of shelter for 80, 85% or 90% of the people. This still means we may have 10%, 15% or 20% that are not being serviced, but it will give us, give them the opportunity to come together. And where we can go to one location, we've got these programs now, we've got them in place, and these programs, we have people servicing our homeless population. If we have a location where they can meet, and I'm talking about one emergency shelter, I understand there's some land between Kelso's, and that might be an ideal location to put in an emergency shelter, just with fencing. It could have, you know, you'd have to have restrooms there for their needs. This would be some help for the homeless. We could be number one in the valley. We could eliminate our homelessness. The reason I say that is because if you go online, you can look up the homeless count for 2022. And what we found is quite a few things. In Turlock, we have less this time than we did before. We went from 232 down to 211. So we have 211, and we're housing approximately 100 of those now, so we have maybe 100, a little over 100 that we need to house. The homeless, mini houses, small houses, pellet houses can be purchased for $13,000 each. We could purchase a lot of those. We do need a location for them. We do have the property behind Kelso's. That is actually city Turlock property, and we could do something for our homeless citizens. But again, you all should, everyone should look at this chart, because it points out exactly what's happening. But you also have to look at it carefully. And the reason I say that is because it says reasons declined for people declining shelter service. And it says 38% of the reasons are staff, they don't like the staff, they don't, they're drugs, they're on drugs, or safety and violence. But if you look at the N number, there are actually, and this is for the whole county, there are actually 1,857 homeless in our county. This N number, only 252 answered this question. So you think, well, look, 38% don't, no. Out of 252, which was taken from the 1,857, 38% said that it's staff, drugs, safety, violence. So you have to read this properly, and you have to follow it. But the sheltered, unsheltered, it says we have 49% of the people are sheltered in our county. However, the numbers, yes, the numbers do add up. So we only have 59, 51% that are unsheltered in our county. In Turlock, it's just about that amount also. I tried to get the exact amount, wasn't able to get that. But we have the means in Turlock, with the millions of dollars that we have, that are allocated for homeless and similar issues, we could take care of this. This doesn't have to be the way it is. We could take care of this. We could take care of this here in Turlock. We could be the first in the valley to take care of this. We could be the first, and that's what I want us to be. Turlock is the first. Turlock is the best. We always have been, and we should continue to be. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in regarding this item consent calendar, item D, David, housing? Yes, Mr. Breggrum.
I don't have prepared comments. I'll just make a couple comments off the top of my head. Number one, all five of you, six of you at the dais, seven of you at the dais, received my email from last night talking about the homeless situation, and how we need to do something, and how, you know, going all the way back to March or whenever, no, February, I think, when the homeless encampment emergency was declared, and we were told at that time by the acting city manager way back then, that we were going to, during that emergency, develop a two to three-year plan. And then we had the ad hoc committee, and you had your report, and we're still kind of waiting to see, you know, what's going to be done. The point in time count is a snapshot, and you can't really take specific numbers from, from one year to the next year and say, well, you know, we've had a slight decrease, so we're going down, or we've had a slight increase, so we're going up. Okay? It, it's a very specific snapshot that's taken on one day during a specific timeframe. There's been a lot of talk about Housing First and things like that. I can bring experts, I can show you videos of people, especially in San Francisco, who either have gotten out of homelessness in San Francisco, or they have family members who are homeless, and they talk about the, the problems that they have, or people who are in some of the, I don't know if this is the right term, but the Housing First type of housing that the city of San Francisco has set up in hotels, and how the environment in those hotels have degraded significantly over a period of time. And, and some of these individuals that actually want to get out of being drug addicted can't get the help that they need because of the environment that, that they are in, so on and so forth. So I think a lot needs to be thought about and talked about concerning that. I look forward to any information that we can get from city staff and the council on what we can do. Okay, I'll throw out one other thing. If you want to have a encampment, so on and so forth, the city has five acres called Sodequist Park, where the armory is. Okay? I think that that ball field is not used for the majority of the year. You could, I don't know if it's possible to open up the armory. You have bathrooms there, you have kitchens there, you have plenty of concrete space, you know, for tents, RVs, so on and so forth. Though, I kind of think that the people in the surrounding area might not be too happy if you set up a big homeless camp there. But that's another possibility. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak regarding this consent item D with the local emergency for unsheltered? Okay, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back. Ms. Hedy, can you kind of speak to it real quick, please? If there's something you need to?
I was going to address the comments about homeless during city managers, during city managers' report.
Okay.
So if you'd like to wait till then, I'll address it then.
That's fine. Okay. All right, then, what's the will of the council?
Motion to approve item D.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nazrati?
Yes.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Franco?
Yes.
Mayor Boobla?
Yes. And it passes five zero. Item 8A. What do we got there? The money man. The budgets.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. I have in front of you is a continuation from the last meeting, the annual fiscal budget of the fiscal year 2223. There was a split vote at the last meeting. I did opt to bring it back for, in the nature that there is some actions that need to be taken regarding our fiscal budget. There are some responsibilities. One, our ordinance overall needs, makes, requires that we take action. Also, we have expenditures that are going to be coming up. There need to be appropriations that are set aside. So a lot of reasons why that you go through the process, some state, federal regulations, also some good accounting principles that go along with it, GAAP principles and things of that nature. So the budget has not changed from the prior documents you've seen in the, in the prior packet. So I'll open it up for any questions.
Questions for Mr. Moreno. Yes. Okay. All right, let's open it to the public. Anyone wishing to speak regarding our next fiscal year budget? Yes, Mr. Treewiler.
I just have one quick question. I know that the last meeting, when you did talk about the changes that were made, we had the option, or I'm not sure if it's an option, but you had two prices, one for a full-time homeless administrator and one for a half-time. And, well, the way to go there is to have one for a full-time. A full-time person, I mean, you could talk to my sister. She does, what this person's going to do is be going out, they're going out for grants. going to do is be going out, they're going out for uh, grants, and we're getting grants. We've got lots of money. We can solve it without any new grants, probably, maybe, but this person can guide us and give us guidance. So I hope that you would change that. So instead of making it a position, part-time position, make it a full-time position. We've got the money and the budget for it. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak regarding the fiscal year budgets? Okay, we will close the uh, public hearing and bring it back. Comments?
Uh, actually, one question, I guess, here. Um, so the, uh, one of the positions this council has expressed is that we don't wanna use one-time monies for ongoing expenses. Right now, do we have in this budget items that are, that would be categorized as ongoing expenses that are using one-time monies?
The only one that I can classify as a one-time money potentially probably be the FEMA reimbursement they're going for. Uh, we actually had some expenditures already allocated for that, to be able to submit that. So it's a very small amount overall. We're only recognizing about a hundred thousand dollars of revenue for that.
What about salaries that are using ARPA funding?
So, ARPA funding is within the ARPA, the, the overall budget itself. It is allocated for multiple years, so it's not one-time and it could, within a couple of years' sense. But yes, you are correct. At one point, it will go away.
At the conclusion of the funding being made available, do we have a plan as to, have we made a determination as to what funding is gonna be used to um, to cover those costs?
Yeah, so my direction, what's within the budget itself and the budget process, which we'll talk about in the next year's workshops, is slowly try to bring those positions in. So we're allocating those positions in a, in a standpoint, but you really wanna try and phase them in as we go through the process, so that we come to the term of it, we're not trying to gobble that whole thing up.
We're using general fund?
Well, address that as we go through it. Depending on what the position is, it would depend on where it's gonna be funded. So it, it, it really depends on what we're talking about.
So, thank you. I appreciate it. So, I mean, based on what I'm hearing here, we are taking a position that we are taking, um, using one-time or limited funding of ARPA to fund positions that will no long, will not be made available to us after a certain period of time, and that money is going to have to be absorbed using the general fund. This is when we were talking about good uh, financial fiscal policy as a council, we explicitly stated that that wasn't good policy. Um, I'm putting that out there to my colleagues as to, you know, what has, what, why is it that we have changed that position? Is there anything in, is, is there anything in particular that makes us feel comfortable making an exception with this one-time expense? I know uh, Mayor and Vice Mayor, uh, you both have indicated that that is your position. Is there any comments that you guys, guys have pertaining to that?
Well, I have several comments on the budget. Um, first of all, it's a balanced budget. That is due to the hard work of our staff and the hard work of this council. In this budget, we've added fire positions, we've added police positions, we've added uh, positions um, for the rec department, we've added uh, parks workers, we've added road maintenance and road repairs, tree trimming, um, improved water quality and quantity. We've given raises to our staff. Um, we've, we've got new city management, we've got a new uh, city clerk, we've got a new police chief, new fire chief. We've, we've done a lot, and this budget pays all those people. Without this budget, July first, we will not be able to pay our staff. It's not fair to them not to pass this budget. This budget is a living, breathing thing. We can change it at any point we, we see fit, but without this budget, number one, we get fined by the state of California, and number two, we cease to be able to pay our bills. And it's a slap into the, the face of our employees who worked so hard to get this budget to us. We can, we can debate all day long about the contents of it, and we have plenty of time during the year to change those contents, but without this budget, we don't do our most important function. The most important function of this council is to pass the budget. So that's what we need to do.
Okay, so there is no position that you're taking on that specific line item?
I'm taking the position that we need to pass the budget.
Would you be um, supportive of passing a budget with the, with that item pulled off of it?
No.
Okay, so there is no negotiations, and that's
So are you, are you asking, I'm sorry to interrupt, are you asking for the ARPA expenditures to be voted separately in a whole, uh, like, all ARPA and then the budget, so that you can vote for the budget, but you're not willing to vote for the ARPA? That's what you're telling us, right?
That, that's one, that's one of the key items that I have disagreement on, yes.
Are there any other that you need to take off from the major thrust of this?
Um, yeah, no, my, my pri- my primary issues right now are pertaining to the bud, the ARPA spend.
Councilmember Larson?
Um, just like the, with the last meeting, I uh, have a really hard time getting behind this budget. Um, the COVID recovery money towards staff positions that, that should already be funded by our regular operations budget, um, instead of funding park improvements, new programs, or lighting improvements, or potentially new prog- uh, new positions that would help our city, I thi- I fundamentally disagree with that. I also fundamentally disagree with the policy direction. Um, and, and for the record, this has nothing to do with staff. Staff fulfills the will of the council, and you guys did a fantastic job doing that. It's a balanced budget. It's very articulate. The budget presentations were fantastic, extremely thorough. I think that's one of the first times since I've been on council, and maybe even before that, where the public had such detailed access to those numbers, and especially when it's such a large budget. So, and it's, and it's grown because of Measure A, cannabis, and ARPA. So kudos to our, to our finance staff and everybody, and Mr. Wilson, uh, Mr. Petrolock has everyone, and the, everyone's staff are, their hands in it. Once again, nothing to do with our staff members' efforts within this. It's policy. Um, well, not spending any money made from our cannabis program for youth preventative services, as it's continuing to go right now, grow right now, there's nothing in the budget, and it's just money that's growing. Um, and after Measure A, we now have the most money the city has ever seen or have had access to, to design and repair roads, but instead, we're paying consultants to come in and do that, uh, when we don't need to, especially with, with an unrealistic timeline. Um, it's just, it's unnecessary money when we have the staff to take care of that. And also, for the record, um, uh, this, since I've been elected, we've always approved a balanced budget, even if our services have suffered. So it's always been approved as, as balanced. Um, and also, this budget also reflects the new housing program model that is uh, going, is, is giving away um, opportunities for free monies that could be used for affordable housing and keeping our long-term staff employed by the city. So within the policy decisions, and also a, a policy decision to only augment everyone's garbage bill by five dollars rather than making, using that four point six million dollars into an actual um, um, low-income program for those that would actually need it, and that are really gonna feel the impact of our garbage rates going up. Um, we could have actually given it to people that actually uh, need it, rather than just giving it a blanket five dollars off of your garbage bill. I, I just know that that's not going to make a huge difference compared to what that money actually could have done. So because of those reasons, I can't support this budget. Um, and it's just disheartening, especially after we asked the public to uh, step up and give more um, to, to our organization, to keep our services at a level we believe is adequate for our city through Measure A. Um, it's just too bad that we don't see a lot of those monies going to front-facing services that you see on your walk to the park, on you see, when you're dropping up your kids at school. Um, and I wish that we could have done a, a better job with that. So, once again, great job, staff. This is just some policy decisions that I fundamentally and know are, are not going to give the biggest impact that we could have. Thank you.
Okay, what's the will of council? Move to approve the budget.
Second.
Call the roll, please. Councilmember Larson?
No.
Councilmember Nasrati?
No.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Franco?
Yes.
Mayor Bublak? Yes. Passes three-two. Thank you, Mr. Moreno, for your time. All right. Item B, request to accept improvements, authorizing the city engineer to file a notice of completion for southeast quadrant. Mr. Frimming? Yes, but that's not misconstrued.
Good evening, council. Have a presentation, so hopefully you can view that. This is um, requesting approval of the notice of completion for city project twenty-dash-zero-zero-one, southeast quadrant road rehabilitation. As background, this project was awarded uh, July twenty-seventh to Dirt Dynasty, um, in the amount of about one point two million dollars. Uh, May twenty-fourth, council meeting included motions to approve the final change order number two and approve filing of notice of completion. The change order was approved, and the notice of completion was not approved. There were some concerns expressed over the finished quality. So that's what I'm here to speak about today. And um, so just backing up a little bit about the project scope and the funding, um, here on the screen is shown the, kind of the map, the area that was identified for rehabilitation, and a chart showing those different segments. The project was initiated in the year twenty-twenty, um, when we had Measure L funding alone, um, with the total project, I, budget identified at one point four million dollars. So up until recently, the city has um, used essentially three tools, three different kinds of treatments for pavement rehabilitation. Slurry seal, which we see in assessment districts, um, used on good roads, hot mixed asphalt overlays on fair to, to poor roads, um, and then re- full reconstruction, which is digging out, you know, the existing materials and basically starting over. So there are other treatment options in the tool belt that we could use. Um, and so up in, up until recently, we had been using just those three, but in the recent past, we've been looking at and um, you know, utilizing more tools at our disposal. Um, here's a list of, you know, several different kinds of treatments that can be used. Um, the ones listed at the top are, from crack seal, are, are for, you know, very low cost and um, are meant to extend the life of the pavement. And as you move down, the PCI value on the left, the pavement condition index, just the different kinds of methods that you could use to, to restore the, the drivability of the road, the usability, and extend its life. As you move down that list, the per-unit cost per area goes up quite a bit. So um, hot mixed asphalt overlays, this is a picture from the recent Golden State project as um, the contractor was paving, but they're, they're effective for sure. We've been using them for a long time. Um, they produce a very smooth surface. It looks like a brand-new road. Um, it's not a brand-new road, 'cause you know, we're basically layering on top. Um, but it, it does last quite a while, and it is effective. It is also quite expensive. Um, granite overlay treatments cost between twenty to thirty dollars per square yard on average. Uh, this project did not utilize HMA overlays in an effort to, again, stretch those dollars in that original one point four million dollars using the Measure L budget that we had at the time. So this project used um, these three uh, different treatment types shown on the screen. Uh, fiberized micro-surfacing, um, at about four dollars per square yard. This is similar to a slurry seal, though it cures faster. Uh, we used fiberized asphalt rubber cape seal at eight dollars per square yard, and that's um, you spray-apply a viscous asphalt rubber binder, um, you drop three-eighths inch crushed aggregate, um, and then after that's cured, then you come back with a micro-surfacing wearing course over the top. And then finally, there's a three-layer treatment, which kinda combines those numbers one and two, where you first put a very thick type-three micro-surfacing layer down, and then you come back with a asphalt rubber cape seal. So the, the treatment um, does fulfill the purpose of extending life. It is not quite as smooth, again, as, um, oopsie, what did I do? Let me try that again. There we go. Uh, not quite as smooth, again, as, you know, the Golden State Boulevard that we see in the picture there. Um, but it, it does, um, it does do quite a bit to, to extend the life of the pavement. So again, those kind of comparison screen here showing kind of the, the cost per square area and what you look at with these different treatments. Um, so Michael Baker International, as we all know, they're working on the roads program initiative. Um, as part of that, they did survey the roads that were treated under this project. Um, in this table here, we can see the pre-construction PCI that was determined back in twenty-thirteen. That was the last visual um, inspection. And again, it's a value of zero to one hundred, zero being the worst, one hundred being the best. And the values in the vault, in the right, show the post-construction PCI. So it was independently verified through Michael Baker's efforts that, you know, the roads have been vastly improved from what they were. So, question, you know, did, did the contractor do their job? Did they, did they do the work of their um, um, of the, of the plans and specifications? So again, um, the, I believe yes, they did. We, we had inspection services um, on-site, um, our inspection staff. Uh, we um, we verified that the spread rates, the materials they used was all in line with the, with the treatments that we had specified. And uh, we had um, independent testing done by um, our retained inspection firm, NV5. So yes, we, we do believe the contractor met their requirements um, under the types of treatments being utilized for this project. Here are some befores and afters of the various streets. I don't wanna take too much time. I noticed your council agenda packet had over, had over a thousand pages in it. But um, this is kind of interesting and, and good to see, and reflect on, you know, kind of the work that was done. So I'll quickly kinda go through these. There's Bell Street. Um, here's the Portionon, Cahill. Colorado Avenue. This received a three-layer uh, treatment, the kind of the most, uh, the more expensive of the three options that we used. Marshall Street, here. Um, we're gonna come back and talk about Marshall Street at the end. Merritt Street. Rose Street. Oak Street. Pioneer Avenue, again, another that used the three-layer system. Um, it was incredible difference between before and after on that road. Uh, Sycamore Street. Okay, so, seen the befores and afters, you've seen the chart from Michael Baker's show on the post-construction PCI. Um, Marshall Street, you know, this is one that, if you can see in the bottom left, um, this received an AR cape seal. It, it did a good job of filling in the biggest of the cracks. However, due just to the, the amount of cracking on the street, didn't fill in everything. It's not a perfect job. Um, we recognize that. Kind of a learning opportunity for us as we try out these new treatments and try to stretch those dollars that, in hindsight, a three-layer system probably would have worked better here. Um, however, the contractor, again, did, did meet their contract obligations for what was specified for this segment. So um, all that being said, though, the post-constructionPCI was determined to be one hundred by Michael Baker. Um, it did improve the road, but, you know, obviously, there are alternatives council could choose to, direct staff to, to do more on that particular road if, if that was the will of council. This is a very wordy slide here. I don't wanna get to read every single word, but there are a number of alternatives you could decide to go with, um, on Marshall Street. You could direct us to work with the contractor to do additional work. Um, the estimated cost for that, I'm, I'm coming up with about fifty to sixty thousand dollars. Um, and that's because it's just a very small amount of work that I have to mobilize a crew, when you just don't get good economies of scale, um, to bring them back out to do work. Option, alternative number two, um, the city is currently working with Stanislas County. Stanislas County is leading a project to rehabilitate um, county islands that border the city here, and so we have a fifty percent share in those, in those, um, those segments currently. So I've worked, um, contacted the county, and they're willing to entertain this option, that if we wanted to tack on some more work to East Marshall Street, they'd be okay with that. We'd um, come up with an amendment, and that estimated cost would be about thirty thousand dollars. Council could identify Marshall Street um, as a priority project in the roads program to do in the future. And again, combining that work with uh, other, other segments would increase and improve our per, per-unit pricing. And finally, council could accept the addition, kind of as-is, and not assign any special priority. Um, and, you know, those are the alternatives I could come up with in the time. So um, again, the uh, if I was to recommend one, I would recommend alternative number two. Uh, we could work with the county, and later this, they did, later this year, when they're scheduled to do additional work, uh, if you wanted to, you could um, you know, have us um, add that to that project scope. Again, that's basically the presentation I prepared. Um, recommended action is to accept the improvements, authorize the city engineer to file a notice of completion, and then to select any of the alternatives um, that you, that you feel would be necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Frimming. Uh, questions for? Questions? No questions? Okay, let's uh, open it to the public. Any questions pertaining to this specific southeast quadrant? All right, we will close the uh, public comment and bring it back for comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thanks so much for the presentation and coming back with such a detailed report. Um, I also take it as a learning opportunity. When this project was first talked about, um, I don't even, a few years ago, when I, um, when I was elected in two thousand and eighteen, I remember walking these streets and door-knocking and just noticing not only the condition of these roads over here due to the not being part of assessment district, but also the safety concern of kids walking up and down Marshall to go to and from school at Turlock High School. And when we started getting into the design part of it, the roads being improved in my head, in my naive head, as just a, a regular Joe Schmo citizen, was, okay, cool, we're gonna get some sidewalks, we're gonna get some gutter, we're gonna get striping, we're gonna make sure that it's safe to walk up and down. And when the improvement started happening, I received calls from residents saying, hey, they're just, they're, they're they're just, they're stopping right where the road ends, where's like the sidewalks or anything like that? And after reaching out to the engineer, the answer was, well, that wasn't a part of the scope of work that was approved. Oh, okay. From a council's perspective, from a council member's perspective, my policy or my direction to staff was not totally encompassing of the, really, the goal here of making sure it's not only a better street for driving, but also safety precautions and things like that. So I'm wondering, with these alternatives that are suggested, and even working with the county, which I agree, that sounds like a great option for us, is there also, and I understand how narrow these roads are because they were built so long ago and imminent domain, I don't want to, you know, step on someone's house or their property, is there also opportunities here to make it safer and more walkable for people walking back and forth from school or dropping off their kids and things like that? I know that might be a question for the county, too, but just from your perspective.
So true, the initial scope didn't really consider sidewalks, additions, that kind of thing. Working within the budget of the $1.4 million that was allocated at the time, it just wasn't possible. Anything is possible with time and money. I would say that an alternative to add it to this project would be really difficult in that there'd be like a lot of right-of-way concerns that we'd have to somehow resolve. That area of town has very large trees, so making sure we had the property to, you know, kind of thread the needle, as it were, to make sure that we had the rights to install the sidewalk, all those kinds of things. Again, anything's possible, and, you know, the staffs at will have counsel for what you'd like to do. It would be a rather large endeavor and not like an easy tack-on type of thing. It would, we'd have to re-engineer, basically, we'd have to get engineering involved to determine right-of-way and make sure it was done just correctly, you know, that we're not just kind of going too fast and doing things in the proper order.
Comments?
Yes. Thank you for taking the opportunity to meet with me. Mr. Frimming and I actually walked for a couple hours one afternoon, the streets, and so we looked at all the paving, looked at all of the repairs. He explained to me in detail the differences between the cape seals and the slurry seals, and some of which I knew, but I was not aware of the fact that we had chosen the cape seal on this and what exactly that meant. So we walked and I pointed some stuff out and he explained it to me. So I really appreciate you taking the afternoon with me to walk those particular streets. He even went as far as to take the LIDAR, the Street Saber, on the specific streets that we had repaired. And all of the streets came up with a score of at least 96 or better. So all of the streets in the, in this particular area of repair are now at at least 96%. So I was very happy because that was one of my questions is, what did it look like now? So good reporting. It looks great now. So thank you for Katie and Stephen taking the time. Job well done. You guys did a great job. You dotted all the i's, crossed all the t's. The contractor performed exactly as specified in the contract. So I really appreciate all of your guys' hard work on this one and answering my questions from before. So this is comments, so if anyone can make a comment.
I'll just make one more comment real quick. We had, Vice Mayor and I had done some walking out there, right, after Hapton? We were like, oh, wow, great. And then you see it a little bit later and it started to dissolve a little bit and I, you know, you hear people, hey, I waited 40-plus years and, you know, I just, I thought it was going to be like, it would look really super cool. And it didn't work out that way, much like Councilmember Larson, you know, there's a lot to learn about roads, right? I didn't, I didn't know that what we had said was, and I always use the verbiage because it's not correct, with Director Quintero, I thought there'd be two smushings, right? I didn't know that it was just one lay and one smoosh and it was done. So, and, you know, my bad, I should have asked if you were smushing twice, but apparently you didn't. So with that, I get, I get that we need to ask more questions or see what that looks like for a 40-plus-year road, you know, kind of sort of rehab. So not your fault. I'll ask more questions next time. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
And the option?
Second.
No?
Oh, for the option?
Second option.
I...
Two?
Yeah, option two.
I didn't know if that was second or two.
It was both. Okay. Second or option two.
We have a motion to approve with adding option two, having the county work with you guys. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nazrati?
Yes.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Franco?
Yes.
Mayor Bublak?
Yes. Fast as five-zero, thank you, Mr. Frimming.
Thank you.
Before we go any further, item 8O, as in Ocean, has been pulled, so that won't be on tonight's agenda. Moving on to items C as in Charles, we begin the long process of Ireland's stuff here, right? Who's going to start with this one? Ms. Domi. All right.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and City Staff. Jessie Domi with Human Resources. It is my pleasure to introduce items 8C through 8H and momentarily invite Witten Ireland Insurance Agency, Mike Ireland, Lynn Bull, and Blaine Adams. Before we ask the team to come up and present, I would like to state for the record, the lines of insurance requesting council approval this evening is each covering the period of July 1, 2022, through June 30, 2023. Staff has discussed and made it known with Witten Ireland that the city will be taking an RFP out for brokerage fees. Having said that, I would like to request Witten Ireland speak. Does anyone want to?
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Real quick, let me just see if you guys are okay to have all the presentations and we'll vote independently, so you guys can kind of, once you get that rhythm?
Sure. Yep, I'll go through C through G, and then we'll have Lynn speak on the health.
Outstanding. Thank you so much.
So thank you, Mayor, council members. I'll kind of just take these one at a time, and we can answer questions. Overall, this is a very good insurance renewal. The property, employment practices liability, cyber, excess work comp, and the airport liability as a whole took a 5.5% increase from last year. That is below industry trend. Unfortunately, inflation has hit kind of every area of life, and insurance is not immune to that. However, we'll start with the property, and that is an area that for several years now the city has performed better than I've seen almost any other account of ours. So we made the right decision in moving, gosh, four or five years ago, from Travelers Insurance to our current program with Gladfelter's. Last year, or we end this period with the additions to equipment, vehicles, property, the annual premium would be $160,000. We have increased, let's see, we increased building values by 4.2%. We saw a slight decrease in contractors' equipment, a decrease in auto, but overall, the values that we are protecting are up 2.8%, and the premium is down 1.2%. So we go from about $160,000 down to $158,000. No change in coverages, other than we're just covering more property in general. Anyone have any questions on that before I move forward? Okay. See, I'll try to take them in order. The next line item is cyber liability insurance. This is an area that has seen significant premium increases due to just the number of hacks and ransomware. I want to congratulate the city IT department. They have been very, very good to work with, extremely responsive. It is difficult right now for an IT department to jump through all of the hoops they need to jump through just to qualify to get this cyber liability insurance, and especially Travelers has very strict guidelines, and they met all those, basically without any issues, but not without hard work. That line item, again, didn't see any change in coverages, so no increase in deductibles, no changes in limits. That premium is up 13.4% from $24,778 up to $28,100. And even though that's up 13.4%, that is very much below the industry trend right The next line item is employment practices liability. Again, we didn't change carriers this year, just to let everyone know. We shop all of these lines with numerous different carriers. Some years, we make a lot of changes, other years, we don't. This year, everything came back that your current carrier did provide the best coverage and price. So this line item went from $45,000 up to $50,000. It's 11.2%. But again, there is an increase in the employee count and overall revenues there. It's still below industry average. We saw a lot of claims due to COVID and various issues, so that's an overall very good renewal. Item number four, or let's see here, this, not number four, F, is the airport liability. Again, this is an excess policy over the Turlock Regional Aviation Association, which carries the primary insurance out there. They named the city of Turlock as an additional insured, but because the city technically owns the airport and the RMA excludes all liability with aircraft, we have this $5 million policy. This policy, it's considered what they call a minimum premium policy, and the carrier bumped that up. So the premium was $3,200 last year. It's up to $3,575. This year, again, no changes in coverages. And the last line item that I have is the excess work comp. So this is providing workers' comp insurance for any claim in excess of $1.25 million. We saw an increase in the payroll estimates at 6.1%. The rate itself is up 5.1% for a premium increase of 11.4. So that went from $101,000 to $112,700. But overall, all these line items, the total for all the items that I went through, came up to $353,000, which again is a 5.5% overall rate increase. And just to shed a little light, as I go back, I've got five years of data here, and back in 2018, we were paying $434,000 for essentially the same coverage. And so over the course of the next four years, we've seen a decrease of 18.7% for these various coverages. So that's all I have. If you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
All right, let's, questions from, what we'll do is then we'll open this part to the public and then we'll, so that it's not so many questions if the public has questions. So hang on.
Benefits now or wait?
Wait one second. Let's get these passed through. So items C through G, just spoken about, does anyone have any questions regarding those that wants to come up? All right, we will close those public hearings, and then we will go one by one on motion and a second and a vote, if that's all right. All right.
Motion to approve 8C.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nazrati?
Yes.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Franco?
Yes.
Mayor Bublak?
Yes.
Fast as five-zero, thank you.
Motion to approve 8D.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nazrati?
Yes.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Franco?
Yes.
Mayor Bublak?
Yes. Fast as five-zero, thank you.
Motion to approve 8E.
Second.
Call the roll.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nazrati?
Yes.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Franco?
Yes.
Mayor Bublak?
Yes. Fast as five-zero.
Motion to approve 8F.
Second.
Call the roll.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nazrati?
Yes.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Franco?
Yes.
Mayor Bublak?
Yes. Fast as five-zero.
Motion to approve 8G.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nazrati?
Yes.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Franco?
Yes.
Mayor Bublak?
Yes. Fast as five-zero, thank you. Now, moving on to what's after GH. Your turn, Lynn.
My turn. Good evening, City Council, City Manager, Mayor. Thank you for having us tonight. In front of you in the city packet was the health insurance renewal for all the employee benefits for the city of Turlock. And on this summary, even though we do go out to market, we look at all the alternatives, and there were some alternatives that were, you know, good to look at this year. We still recommend renewing with Sun Life. This is for the reinsurance policy on the medical, which is by far the biggest line item. And this is the second, excuse me, the third year of the renewal with Sun Life. Originally, we started out with a much larger renewal, and we're able to negotiate that down. We got in about, I think it was about a 26% rate increase with Sun Life. We were able to really look at the data, look what was going on with some of the high claims, and we settled back into, and in your packet, you would see an 11.84% increase. We have a couple of programs that we can add with Sun Life, looking at some alternatives. When we actually look at claims dollars that, what you're paying for for the city employees other than your motor vehicle accidents, or we've had a couple COVID claims, by far the biggest expense is cancer. That's usually our big claims that you're dealing with. That second option, option number one on there includes Health Navigator. It's a program with Sun Life that really is a concierge service that helps people that have those major diagnoses, not only to get the best that they can out of their healthcare, to get timely healthcare. Sometimes it's hard to get that appointment or get that surgery on the books, and those people are there to advocate for those patients. It does cost us a $3.80 per employee per month fee, but if you look down at the bottom dollar, they actually give that back to you because every person that uses that program, the retention for the city of Turlock is $175,000. You would pay, you would pay less, 10%. So $17,500 automatically would come off the top of the city's expenses if somebody were to use that program. And it reduces your overall cost for the year if we encourage people to use that and implement that particular program. So when you look at the bottom line, we're looking at between a two and a two-and-a-half percent rate increase once fixed costs and the claims costs are melded together. Fixed costs are those that we pay regardless of whether we have one claim. Those are going up between 11.8 or 13%, depending on which option is the council's pleasure. The Health Navigator program is a very nice program for your employees that really helps the members through that really big diagnoses that, you know, sometimes you're looking at, what do I do next? And that person is there to help them, plus it gets put money back in the city of Turlock's pocket. One of the things that doesn't show on this, because it's discretionary, is that we put this contract in place so that it is what's called a participating contract. If the city of Turlock is profitable to Sun Life, Sun Life will share that profit back to the city. The only caveat to that is that you have to renew with Sun Life. Right now, the city of Turlock is looking at a refund for the 2021, 2022 fiscal year of about $90,000. So that takes this dollar amount down. The net increase then is about $39,000 instead of $126,000. So that is definitely a perk with Sun Life that we're not going to get with any other opportunity that's out there. Other than that, Delta Dental, VSP, the Long-Term Disability are all rate passes, they're all continuing as-is. The life insurance took a little bit of an increase. It's about $1,000 for the total population, and it's due to higher-than-expected claims in the last few years with COVID, with some of the things, our longevity is actually decreasing now in the first time in a long time. So a lot of our carriers are making a little bit of an adjustment. Overall, it's a very, very strong renewal with no changes to the employee benefits. And, you know, it's hard to sometimes get up here and really look at increases, which this is our first increase. The last two years, we've been able to put in front of you a decrease. But I did pull down the statistics of the group for the last 10 years, and I can't stand in front of many groups and tell them that they had a rate reduction year over year. Our highest year was the 2018 year, and our average per employee per month cost was around $2,500. This year, we're coming in with a budget number of under $1,700 per employee per month. So we've done some really good things with the city managers that have partnered with Witten Ireland to really not, we're not compromising benefits, we've not changed benefits, we've added a plan, but we've made some changes that have been very instrumental in bringing down that cost. Because I hate to be out here saying that we're the most expensive plan that is around, and now we have the statistics to show that we're not. So I'm happy to take any questions that you might have with the information that you had in front of you.
Questions for Lynn? No? Let's open it to the public, anyone wishing. Yes, Mr. Treewiler.
I have a quick question. I've attended hundreds of these council meetings, and maybe this should be addressed to Mr. Moreno. We approved the budget, and now we're figuring out what we're going to pay. How does, so have you already included these in the budget, the new prices, the higher prices, percentage-wise, over what we've had from last time? I just don't see, I'm just trying to understand the process here and how we approve the prices and how we approve the prices after we've already approved the budget. Well, what if they're different from what we have in the budget? That's my question.
Makes sense. Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, let's close the public hearing. Mr. Moreno, if you wouldn't mind, sir?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers. The item before you actually is information that we received prior to the adoption of the overall budget. So these allocations and numbers are actually put in. Just a reminder, in the essence of what the budget does, it appropriates the funds. The contracts actually execute the final adjustments, and they execute the expenditures themselves. So yes, they do mirror within what is being allocated here.
And so if we didn't vote for these, you would be able to alter the budget before you submitted it?
We could make adjustments. We, as you see without the year, we can make budget adjustments to account accordingly for any expenditures, whether that be an increase or decrease. That's correct.
Okay. Thank you so much. All right, what's the will of council?
Move to approve.
Seconded. We have a motion and a new second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nasrati?
Yes.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Franco?
Yes.
Mayor Blue Black?
Yes. Passes five zero. Thank you all for that. Mr. Ireland, did you want to, you want to come up and say anything? Are you good? I, you know, I don't put words in your mouth. You came all this way.
I came all this way, yeah. Council, how are you doing? Everybody, thank you, chief. I, I just, nowhere along the way did I, do we really hear how the city staff has worked hard to work through these insurance. And it is a lot of work. The results are very good. Blaine suggested on the property and casualty pieces that we're just not seeing anything like this. I mean, you don't see a 2.1% decrease when you've increased your net property values by a couple million bucks. It, it's just, the, the programs are working really well. And the health and benefits, phenomenal. We've had a, a low of claims because of COVID. All the elective surgeries, of course, are, are deferred. So we're, we're likely to see some momentum picking up on that. But plan design and certainly the, our third-party administrators are, seem to be the right members on the bus, the right team. And, but we are very thankful for Sarah and her team and everybody else at the city level who participate in getting us there.
Outstanding.
So, and I, I told Blaine, you're running with it this time, and then see what you do.
And then I called you up anyway.
Yeah, yeah, right. Is there any questions?
No, we, we thank you. We already voted, but I just realized that you guys did a lot of work, and I didn't want it to let it go unnoticed, that your, our staff, your staff, and savings are, that's always a good thing.
I got you fooled, though, because they're doing the work more than me now.
Now it's public. I'm just saying.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm sorry.
Is it possible to take, I don't know if we can do this, item K, because that's part of all of the renewal process? Or do we have to stay in order?
Well, we voted to do it in order. I don't want to get in trouble.
That's okay.
Sorry. All right. Next item is the...
Point of objection for the line, second. I just had a question on, I believe I already said you're going to pull eight O?
Yeah, it's been...
So that's been pulled from the venue?
Yes.
That was my interest. Do we have an idea of when it's coming back? Is it going to be a special workshop, or is it the next meeting? Nobody knows?
Staff. I don't know. That's up to staff. I didn't, I'm sorry. I'll post it. How's that?
Oh, text me. You text me all the time anyway.
That's true. Why don't I continue, right? Okay. Thanks, Gil. Okay, moving on to the purchase of a new vehicle. And it says here, we're going to have Mr. Goodman.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. So this is a fairly simple item. It's purchase of a, a vehicle for my use as the municipal services director. I am currently driving a Ford Fusion, which has about as much road, off-road capacity as a pair of roller skates. It bottoms out when I go in my driveway. So it, it's really...
You gotta slow down.
It's really not suitable for, for going to work sites and such. And so in, in, in effort to try and find, to find a vehicle for my use, I went first to the, to the state contract and found that vehicles through the state contract would take up to two years to, to get. So that wasn't great. And then I went to the local Ford dealer to see what was available here locally. And so I went first to the Ford dealer because in the past, I've driven a lot of Ford Explorers in my role as Public Works Director in other cities. And so just staying with what I know, I, I went and checked with them first. And they confirmed that vehicles through the state contract were not to be had sooner than 18 months to two years. So they did have, have actually a Ford Explorer on their, on their lot, and I looked at it with them. And then I came back and, and talked to finance about, is there any way that we can accelerate this program, the, the purchase, and just go and, and buy something just on the, that's available at a dealer that isn't through the state contract? And, and so Isaac was very helpful in, in helping me put together this, this item using, utilizing the Turlock Municipal Code Section 2708B6, where we can, we can not go through the typical bid process, not use state contract, but, but get authorization to spend up to a certain limit and then go and find a vehicle. And so that's what we're asking for tonight. This isn't a typical process. It's not a complicated process, but it's not the typical process we use in purchasing vehicles. And so what we're asking for, or what I'm asking for, is a, the approval for, from council to purchase a vehicle, possibly a Ford Explorer, may end up being a Chevy Blazer. And I'm staying with those because that is what the mechanics over at Fleet tell me they have parts for. And so rather than introduce an Audi Q5 or something into the mix, I, I want to stay with something that they already work on. And so at, at this time, if you have any questions about what we're doing and why, I'd be glad to answer those questions.
Questions for Mr. Goodman?
Press for him. Because it's going to me. Do you have currently, I, I don't want to dwell into your employee contract, but you have an auto allowance currently?
No, I don't. Because I was assigned the Ford Fusion the day I started. I, I went to payroll and told them not to give me the auto allowance. And I checked with them today to make sure that I didn't have the auto allowance, and I don't.
Okay. And the Ford Fusion is, is a Turlock City vehicle?
It is.
Do we have any other vehicles in our inventory or our pool that we could utilize for this purpose?
Not, not that aren't being used.
Okay.
Those, those vehicles, we have a couple of Ford Fusions in, in my department. And they're used for office staff mostly to run back and forth to the...
Not, not along the...
No. We don't have any kind of off-road capable vehicles that, that are not already being used.
Would this, this vehicle remain at the site or the jobs, the, it, it's not going back and forth home?
It will be going back and forth home.
Okay. How do we handle the gas with that?
That, I guess is... Well, I don't really use it for personal use. I, I drive it from, from home to work. I use it for, for work purposes. I drive it back home. I don't, other than going to lunch, which is considered actually part of work, I don't, I don't use, use a vehicle for personal use. And so it's, and of course, every, every city is unique. But in other cities where I've had a vehicle that I've taken home, in some cities, they've allowed me to use it for whatever I want to use it for. I could have taken it on a vacation if I wanted to. I never did. But, but that was made available to me. But one of the main purposes of having access to that vehicle at home is that it shortens the, the response time if I need to, if I've needed to respond to an incident in the middle of the night, say, and I have numerous times in my role as Public Works Director here in California and in, up in Oregon and in Utah. And so that keeps me from having to go, you know, into, into the yard and then respond to a site. I could drive directly to the site and maybe cut a half hour off of the, my response time.
Maybe this is a question for Mr. Moreno. How do we account for that for tax purposes? Employee using vehicle for personal use? Do we have any other directors that are, that are assigned a vehicle that they are allowed to take home?
Well, usually, within the policy itself, there's usually a strict, a diagram, demographic in there that actually stipulates that a vehicle will only be utilized for work purposes from home and to work. And work needs, and they usually don't allow people within the vehicle that are not employees and see the nature, so that's how you restrict it, or for work purposes that allow you to be covered overall.
Do we have any other directors that have vehicles?
I, I believe some of the public safety employee chiefs do. Yeah. But other directors actually have the vehicle allowance that you referred to.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for anybody? Okay, let's open it to the public. Anyone wishing to speak regarding this item? Okay, let's close the public hearing and bring it back for some conversation. You, when you mentioned that you got called out on previous locations, wherever you used to work, you used Public Works, Municipal Services, in my 14-plus years, I, I don't know how many times they, I mean, they're usually on the phone saying the worker bees are going to do, and then they can show up. So I, I kind of, I'm a little worried. And then gasoline freaks me out because we've spent exponentially three times what we thought we would.
Right.
So for you to be, you know, if you get, if you, I mean, I'm more apt to give just the, the allowance in lieu of the fact that we have a lot of other department heads, other than public safety, who are only getting that, because that's a lot of gas. And right now, gas is crazy high. And so it just concerns me a little bit that we're, I just can't believe our fleet is completely gone. And I, and I truly believe that we've hired you to be the 30,000-foot guy, right?
Right.
Not the go out there and get your hands dirty and mess up stuff. But that's my values. Anybody else? Can we buy used? Throw some decals on it, decals on it? I mean, I just, it's a lot, if we had a car available in the fleet for you when you're here, it makes sense to me. If the Ford Fusion is inappropriate and we don't have enough trucks to do that, then maybe we try and do something like that. But I hate not buying from Turlock when we are like, you know, trying to tell everybody we want the economy back here. So when we find a way to go around it, it is impossible to find vehicles right now.
Right.
So, and I just want to make sure everybody's hearing the thoughts that I'm having. I don't know what everybody else's values are. Councilmembers? Motion?
Motion to approve, what are we on? Eight I. Sorry. Thank you.
Seconded.
Okay, we have a motion. I am, we have a...
Yeah, I, I guess I'll apologize. I, I don't recall seeing this resolution. And so I wanted, to make sure we meet the municipal code sections, I'd like to offer another recital to be added to the resolution, if I could read it.
All right. I'd love to hear it.
Because the municipal code section cited requires the, a particular determination by the city council to, you know, not go through the bid process. So I'll read what that is. Whereas the council determines that the best interests of the city require that the purchase be made without compliance with the formal bid procedure due to the lack of supply of municipal fleet-type vehicles. So that'd be like the last whereas.
Madam Clerk, you got that?
Yes.
Okay, so whoever made the motion, are they okay with the recital?
Yes.
Okay. And the second too? Okay. We have the motion and the second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nasrati?
Yes.
Councilmember Moniz?
No.
Vice, Vice Mayor Franco?
No.
Mayor Blue Black?
No. It does not pass. We'll find something else. We'll work through it. Thank you. All right, next item. What do we have? Who's up? Jesse?
Mayor City Council.
Long firm name.
Yes. The item before you is item HJ, and it's authorizing, sorry, I want to make sure I'm on the right one. Authorizing the law firm of Atkinson, Andelson, Loya, Rude, and Romo to provide labor negotiations for labor law. And it's a one-year contract, so it's covering the period of July 1, 2022, through June 30, 2023. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
And this is the firm we've been using for all of our negotiations?
We have, yep.
Okay. Any questions? Kevin and Andrew. Open it to the public. Anyone wishing to question any of these or speak to this? Okay, closing the public hearing, bringing it back. What is the will of my colleagues?
Motion to approve HJ. Second.
A motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nasrati?
Yes.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Franco?
Yes.
Mayor Blue Black?
Yes. Passes five zero. Thank you for that. Item K?
All right.
Ms. Dami?
Item K is authorizing the renewal of a three-year agreement between the city of Turlock and Keenan Associates, our third-party workers' comp administrator. With us today is Tony Zuniga from Keenan. And Tony's going to talk a little bit about our, the past three years.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name's Tony Zuniga. I'm with Keenan Associates. We are a third-party administrator and risk management analysts for your workers' compensation system. Claims, I should say. So a little bit about what we do. I know workers' compensation is a big kind of cloud out there, really known, really what it is. State of California says if someone is injured, then they have rights and they have benefits that they are due. And we administer those. So State of California tells us how, when we get a claim in, we have to, we're audited, and we have to say, all right, we believe this claim should be approved because it's a work-related illness, or it should not be approved. But it all comes down to the doctors, right? So that's what we are here to do. We're here to administer the rights of the injured workers and also the regulations of State of California. Before, we've been a long-term partner with you, with the city, close to 10 years, I think. And over that time, we have really got to know your claims and your employees. Before you is a three-year agreement that is between a 3.5 and 4% increase year after year. And we feel really comfortable with that. That's really below market. But we know your claims, and we know where you're going to be at. And I'll give you an example. Over the past eight years, the city's averaged around 55 open claims per year. So at any one time, 55 open claims, they're out there. This past year, COVID hit hard, and the city had around 72 COVID claims, which is roughly 100% increase over what year you are usually. But just because of COVID claims doesn't mean that they were very intense claims. There are a lot of mechanisms through State of California provided with leave. So even though they filed workers' compensation claims, not all the, most of the claims were approved, but benefits weren't due because you already had a false fail-safe mechanism for these employees. So out of all those that were filed, there are only two open at the moment out of all those claims. So the increase is really based on claim volume. And your claim volume did go up because of COVID for the most part. But we feel really comfortable that your claim volume is going to drop. And that's why you see that the modest increases year over year for this workers' compensation contract before you. One last thing I want to say about this is, this contract provides not just third-party administrator, but also risk management services. I'm not a sales guy. I'm actually a risk management analyst. So I work closely with Sarah and Jesse. And whenever there's a problem with a claim, or we can introduce a new program for you, then that's when I come down. I look at your data once a year with, with both of them. And we go through it and say, where are the risks, where, what's going on with your claims? So just something really high level for you, give you an idea. So municipalities and workers' compensation is a tough time right now for everybody. Fire and police account for more than half of all your losses. And that's not because you don't have a good risk management in place, all right? This is probably the toughest time in the history of being a police officer. And probably, and on second for fire with COVID, it was a very dangerous time for, for fire also. So although those two units have traditionally, those two departments have traditionally been the highest, we also see those two having really good bounce backs and getting back to work pretty quickly. Your other units, Park and Rec, Community Services, and Admin, are really just a small piece of pie that are out there. And they don't count for very much of the cost for your program. So I'm willing to entertain any questions I may have about workers' compensation or contract before you.
Any questions for Mr. Zuniga?
All right. Thank you for your time.
All right. Clear as mud. Thank you. We'll open it to the public. Anyone wishing to speak regarding this item? We'll open it to the public, anyone wishing to speak regarding this item? And closing the public hearing, bringing it back.
Motion to approve AK.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nasrati?
Yes.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Franco?
Yes.
Mayor Bu Black?
Yes, passes five zero, thank you, Mr. Zuniga, and Ms. Dami, you're back up again.
Yes. So the next item I have before you is item A, AL, and it's approving the resolution to employ a CalPERS annuitant. So this is for the position of Public Works Director interim, and due to a competitive labor market, staff is requesting to hire back Dan Madden, and that is as we actively continue to recruit for the vacancy of Public Works Director. Any questions?
Questions? So this is, are we having a tough time hiring, is that the?
We are, yes.
I mean, no disrespect to Mr. Madden, he's more than good at this, but I just, you know, we, we kind of went through a cycle using a ton of annuitants, and I'm.
Yes.
Just for everybody to understand that it's hard to get all these people, these positions filled. All right, let's open it to the public, anyone wishing to speak regarding this item? Closing the public comment, bringing it back.
Motion to approve A.
Second. All right, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nasrati?
Yes.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Franco?
Yes.
Mayor Bu Black?
Yes, passes five zero, thank you, Ms. Dami. Moving on, we are going to an additional. Who's up for this one?
So very similar, I think I'm up again.
Okay.
Yes, adopting a resolution to employ a CalPERS annuitant, extra help. This is for our police department, the police department has a critical need, and we are asking that James Silvera return to assist the chief in getting new lieutenants trained and up and running.
What was it, like, one month retirement? That's pretty impressive. It's awesome. Questions for Ms. Dami? All right, let's open it to the public, anyone wishing to punk lieutenant, retire. I'm so glad he's coming, I'm kidding, okay. I will close the public comment and bring it back.
Motion to approve A.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nasrati?
Yes.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Franco?
Yes.
Mayor Bu Black?
Yes, it passes five zero, thank you, and thank all the annuitants willing to come back and help us out, that's awesome. I hope more do. I, I hear that Mark Gomes is looking to come back too, that's exciting. Yeah, yeah. Rumors, you know. Anyway, moving on to authorizing the city manager to release the second issuance of funding for the Rad Card, and is that Sarah? Okay, let's go, Ms. Eddy. Is it working?
Is it on?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Good evening, mayor and council, the item before you this evening is a request to authorize the city manager to release the second issuance of funding for the Rad Card program in the amount of $500,000. On December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one, the city council authorized the execution of a service agreement between the City of Turlock and Downtown Modesto Partnership for the Rad Card matching program, allocating $1 million to this program. ARPA resources were used as the funding source. In December of two thousand twenty-one, the City of Turlock released $500,000, one-half of the matching funds. The council will have the opportunity this evening to discuss and determine the release date of the second allocation of the $500,000. A little bit of statistical information, there are currently seventy-nine local businesses participating in the Rad Card program, and the staff report that you have includes, includes a list of local verified businesses currently accepting Rad Card transactions, and we just got updated information, as of June twenty-fourth, just under $600,000 have been dispersed to Turlock businesses. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Eddy, so when you, you talk about the, the allegedly six hundred thousand has been spent, are you talking about all monies that we've ever put out as the City of Turlock, not the county stuff, but just the monies that we put in?
So, correct, that would be the five hundred thousand that we put in, and then.
The matching?
The matching, yes.
So there's four hundred thousand still out there?
Correct.
Okay, questions for Ms. Eddy?
Has, has the administration be the hundred fifteen thousand dollars already been distributed to the administrators of the?
Isaac, has that been paid? I don't know.
In total?
For sure. The, the one fifteen, the hundred and fifteen?
I, I can look while we further discuss.
Yeah, it would be in the agreement, we can look at it.
Sarah, do we know how many businesses would be eligible to sign up for the Rad Card?
Not off the top of my head, I don't.
Seventy-nine of them have signed up, but we don't know how many others could.
Four thousand? I think we're four, almost four thousand.
Four thousand, so four thousand could, and we've got seventy-nine, okay.
Well, I don't know that all could, because they're not supposed to be chains, right? There's some certain limitations on it.
Right.
Just local businesses, okay. Do the, do the, okay, and then the, we, there's still four hundred, around four hundred thousand out there to be spent. What have we done for the outreach to get local businesses to sign up?
So when we started this, we sent, we got, we obtained everyone's email address, as many as we could, and we sent emails to everyone. We also, through the business summit that we recently had, we had the representative from Modesto speak, and we, I think we also did a social, some social media advertising as well.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Other questions?
If we wanted to, like, send a notification to the individuals that still have an account balance, do we have, like, do we have the type of relationship with Rad Card app where we can make those types of requests? Like, are, do we, yeah, do we have much control over engagement with our users?
We can definitely ask. I mean, I know that, I don't want to wrap myself out here, but some of us haven't used all of their money, and so it's sitting there, right?
What are you waiting for? Let's go to photos.
I know, I know.
You can take me there.
But we can find, we can get that answer, and I didn't mean to put Isaac on the spot, we can get an answer on the, on the fees, yes.
Yeah, we, sorry, we, we've actually allocated a hundred and fifteen thousand, which I think is the full amount.
It's already been paid.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Which is per the agreement, because they still have to administer whether we issue this such tranche or not, so.
Yeah. I, you know, I've recently been out in Modesto trying to use this app, and right now, I don't know if there's something going on with the app, but there's, it's been, there's been a lot of issues, both as a user that's trying to spend the money and as businesses trying to accept it. I want to get this money out and spent. I'm a little concerned about how it's functioning and how well it's being received by the users. I want to support an app that can help stimulate our economy and is continuously being improved, and it'd be nice if there was a way for us to be able to provide some of that feedback and to guide the improvements of the app.
We have, when we started this, they, I think DOMO redid the whole app, and they had so many people, cities, and so much money, it hit their system hard, and they had some issues at the beginning. And I, I will tell you that I do remember this now, during our campaign, we did send out quite a few different social media posts just to let people know exactly how to sign up for it, how to go to the app, how to sign up, and during the business summit, we actually went through the process to show that he, Josh Brightroom was a presenter, and he actually presented and kind of walked people through the steps to show them how to actually sign up for it.
It might be to our advantage to do a bilingual one and get it out there, and, I mean, if there's still forty percent out there, we're not harming any businesses by trying to make sure that the consumers are, are learning how to use it just as much as the businesses. I, I look at the fact that Councilmember Larson just talked about trying to hit the low income, and if the people that are getting the money, we, we can't really tell who's getting it, so if we target, at least we can say we tried to make sure that seniors and low-income know about them being a consumer, and then we have to make sure that in the areas that they live, that there are things that they can utilize too. But I don't think we're harming anybody if we slow down, if there's still forty percent of the money out there waiting to be spent. Like, that's alarming to me, it's, I don't, I don't know what people, I, I've used every dollar of mine already.
Two dinners.
Two dinners. I'm sorry, let's open it to the public real quick, I apologize, I went backwards. Lori?
Okay, everybody knows I'm a Rad Card fan. I don't know, our thinking here, maybe not all of it has been spent, but it's going to be. And as far as getting people to sign up, do you remember me saying how hard it was going to be? Because everybody, it's, it is difficult, you know, I would love to see more businesses, I've told other businesses on the other side of town, but literally, they, I had to go door to door and convince people, you know, I don't know, I don't have anything to suggest for that, but I have been talking to a lot of businesses, and I'm assuming it's this way everywhere, but business has been down. Costs are up, and, I mean, in, in my opinion, it's a good time to release the rest of the money. It's going to be spent in, in Turlock one way or the other. I know, I know one time it came up that somebody had created ten accounts, and I think, you know, it was said at that time, well, the, the bottom line is, though, it is all being spent in downtown, or at that time downtown, we want to see it spent all around Turlock, I get it, but anyhow, just my thoughts, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Please come up. Consumer, or?
I'm a consumer of the Rad Card, I think what you stated about hesitating to release the rest of it if four hundred thousand is still sitting aside, I think that doesn't necessarily make sense because that four hundred thousand is in accounts, it's not open to the consumer base to be spent, so that amount is already set aside for specific individuals, and it's not set to be given out to people. So all of this about getting it out to different people, that four hundred thousand is not a part of that, because that four hundred thousand is already Rad Card members who have signed up their amount. So this additional five hundred thousand, yeah, additional five hundred thousand is for new or reapplying, it's not a part of that four hundred thousand.
Anybody else wishing to speak? I'm sorry, I was just trying to figure out, because if you, if I still have two hundred or four hundred dollars, I, I think I could still go online and do it again, match it up again, is my only fear, right? I mean, I'm not trying to block anybody, I'm just saying, if we could make one more outreach to the people who are low-income and seniors, just in case, I mean, when it opens, it opens to everybody, but I, I just don't know if we've met that, that threshold for our consumers, this is my, my biggest concern.
I have one more question. So when we renew the five hundred thousand, it resets everybody, so I could go back again and get another tranche?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, and that's part of the, the issue. For, for me, in my district, I have fixed income individuals, a lot of them, the low-income individuals, and so part of the problem is, when we release the tranche, it needs to coincide with paydays for the people in my district, and primarily, that's the first and third of the month. You either get paid once a month, or if you're on social security, they get their income checks on the third of the month. And so when we release the tranche, say, on the twenty or the twenty-fifth of, of the month, a lot of my folks are already out of money, and then they're getting beat out, and that's not fair. So the other thing I need is, we do need it in Spanish, because I have so many Spanish speakers in our district, and, and a lot of them can't read the information that's being put out. Just my two cents.
So Ms. Eddy, is it, is that like, a really time-consuming thing for, for us to, to be able to send that out, whether it's to every resident, or, I mean, I don't know how we, we can figure out how to do that, but how would, how could we do that in an expeditious manner, not, you know, what we, when would you, so you'd say August first or, or third is what you're saying?
Yeah, I'm saying like the fourth or the fifth, like right after both of those paydays, because that's where the bulk of it.
When they have money on their card, yeah. I'm sorry.
So I think we can work with finance to see when the utility bills go out, and put them with the utility bills in English and in Spanish.
Yeah, the best way, I can agree with that, the best way to hit the masses of the residential is to hit, is to issue out the utility bill statement within there, there's always room within there where we can issue out some verbiage, not have to add attachments, which is going to cost additional money, or anything to that nature, that is our best unit of measurement to get words out there. We do do billings in quadrants, so once a week, we are hitting every single, one quadrant at a time, so to hit every single one of them, you'd have to go for a tight span of a month, to make sure that all that notification gets out, but that's kind of the best way to get it out there to the public.
So Isaac, you're saying it's going to take about a month just to get that out, right?
To hit every quadrant, that's correct.
Okay, so we're in July, that's going to take a month, we wanted to go at the first of the month, that gets just, just a little bit, because September is kind of the corner to turn, to go into the holidays and Christmas, and that's going to get us right there, if we could put the tranche off until like, I don't know, like September fourth or fifth? Is that too far? I don't know, I'm just talking out loud.
What are your guys' thoughts on the idea of creating small dispersments, like, if we release something, if we give the go-ahead to release something, maybe on the, this upcoming first or third, a small increment? I think, because I think one of the ways that we're most effectively going to get the word out is by breaking these out into different press release news cycles, so if we have $500,000 that have already been allocated for dispersment, maybe we can start off by dumping $50,000 out on the third for a match, that'll start circulating the word, and we can work on asking for reporting related to how quickly that money has been taken and spent, and then work over the next month to get as much outreach as possible, and then decide at that point how much more we're going to distribute, because I, I, I think from a marketing perspective, it would be most effective if we did break it up into little buckets, so that way the most frequent users of it, or the ones that are most eager to spend it, are going to be the ones that are going to go out there and acquire it.
Yeah, I would love to get more businesses involved, to me, seventy-nine, and, and out of the seventy-nine, only twenty-six received more than $5,000, so we're not reaching enough businesses, and I know businesses down in a lot of businesses, so if we could somehow get the outreach to the businesses so that more businesses offer the Rad Card, that would be fantastic. And I do like the idea of doing smaller increments, but I think we need to focus on making sure that everybody knows about when we're releasing it, because it's not fair if people don't understand the, you know, our stuff.
Well, and right now, we're sitting with forty percent unspent.
Forty percent is still there unspent, and we need to work on that too, can we somehow say, you know, hey, spend it by the holidays, folks, but, I mean, we can't take it back, obviously, but somehow, let's get some urgency for them to spend it as soon as possible. Didn't do us any good to put it out there if people aren't going to give it to the businesses.
Right, we can.
We can't, we can't. Sorry.
No, no, we can, we can, is this on? Okay, we can do a little more social media, and just try to push out some information to say, don't forget, you might have Rad Card funds, don't forget to use it, I mean, we can do something like that.
And Sarah, I have a question, I'm sorry, so many questions today. There's a, if we do different, so there's a, we have a half a million left, right? Say we did that in five tranches, tranches, I'm just saying hypothetically, we did a hundred, 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 that's, that's five resets, right? Somebody could do it five times, the same person.
Yes. Yes.
In fairness, in fairness to the Vice Mayor, when you were talking about, we need more businesses and, and Ms. Smith, too, I, we try. I mean, you and I walked around and told people, and they'd be like, come back another day.
Yeah.
I'm here now, right? I mean, it's so difficult. And I, and I think like, you know, the people who are harmed the most during COVID are not asking for it. It's just strange to me. Like you look at dentists and gyms are finally showing up. My hairdresser won't do it. Oh, it's too much work. Holy smokes. It's, I mean, there's so many nails and hair and dentists and gyms that should be on this list, and I'm just stunned. And, and to think that it doesn't cost you any money. A Visa transaction costs you money. This doesn't cost them money. And I don't know how else to tell people. So that part's like, you know, we're, we're doing our best there, but now it's how do you get the consumer who truly needs the money to at least have an option to try and get it? That's my biggest, like, how can, how can we at least get that? If it doesn't work and we've exhausted, like we did with the, the businesses, I mean, at least they'll be able to buy things on Saturday besides free ice cream, right? They're going to buy things at the museum, right? So come, come down there to the museum and spend your forty percent of the rest of the, what's a four hundred thousand dollars that we have out there. Come on, people.
One, one of my thoughts, the social media posts and like Turlock Journal articles really are not that effective at reaching the majority of people unless we are putting digital ad spend behind the posts. The posts, like we should have a targeted ad campaign that assures that we're going to have tens of thousands of impressions on the posts that we're putting out there and engaging content that has videos that show people how quick and easy it is to use. The, the marketing material that comes out of government is typically not very sexy or engaging or appealing. So, yeah, I think if we're going to try and do an outreach campaign, we should be looking to consultants that do digital outreach, digital ad campaigns around our social media posts on our city pages.
The other thing I'll offer to you is that I recently met with Tim Robinson. He is in charge of a union, and he said, you know, if you need, you know, pay us a little bit, but you need a ground force, we will go out and, you know, if we're taught, we'll go out and teach everybody here, do this. I mean, it might be worth, you know, fifteen thousand dollars, I'm making this up, I don't know how much, just to get the outreach, to tell people about it. Because there, there's so many people who just don't know what's going on until you get to their door. I mean, I, I don't pay a lot of attention to social media because who knows where it's coming from, right? So that when you get to somebody's doors, when you get that, that one chance to catch them and say, hey, you want to make a hundred out of a hundred? You know, I mean, they might think you're selling a box of rocks, but, I mean, they might not.
I mean, this, this money was supposed to help not only the businesses, but the, but the citizens, too. So the Radcard idea is fantastic, but I, I want to help more than seventy-nine local businesses, you know? I'm kind of in a dilemma with, I'd almost like to take part of it and do more grants to the businesses because that seemed to reach more businesses than the Radcard's reaching. So without some sort of, you know, new push, I'm, I'm in a dilemma. I want to help our local businesses. So how do we do that?
One option is, we can speak with Josh Bregram and just see what he has as far as additional marketing strategies to try to push the information out.
At this point, are we obligated to the remaining five hundred thousand? Or did we, did we make an amendment so that way we have the ability to pull that back?
We haven't made an amendment to the agreement, but Josh Bregram has been very willing to work with us on that, that information as far as holding back that, that next payment. He understands what the council's direction is to kind of get the large outreach. Also, we talked to him about waiting until after the budget supplement as well to get further information. So to this point, he's been willing, meaning to work with us. And as you stated, with the admin component has been issued regardless, because there is still services that are being issued. So I think he's, I shouldn't, I'm not going to speak for him, but I, I would assume he's willing to continue to work with us.
All right. So...
There's, you guys don't have any, you guys want to be supportive of even doing like a really small contribution to, for the match? We could do something as small as like twenty-five grand for the initial push, because I think that gets us a minimum, like the word of mouth circulated, it gets us another story in the journal. And the Modesto Bee, is that guy still here? No, he's not. But like saying that City of Council try, is trying to figure out how to get all of the businesses onto Radcard, and we're doing it by putting a tiny carrot out there and hope, and we could come back in two weeks and see how quickly that twenty-five thousand was spent, where it was spent, and now we still have four hundred seventy-five thousand remaining to be able to...
Yeah. That's really, I mean, if, you know, throw a twenty thousand out there while we're trying to do, find out what Josh is doing and seeing if Mr. Moreno can get something going out there to try and, and, I mean, honestly, I'd like to spend just as much as the twenty thousand trying to get door to door if we, I mean, if, you know, it's not an election time right now, so people aren't, you know, knocking on doors to, hey, vote for me. It might help people just, oh, okay, you're offering me money. I mean, I don't know how else to get these people to realize that there's a chance for them to make a hundred bucks.
I, I think putting some money aside for marketing and outreach component, both digital and physical, makes good sense, because it's, the product's only as good as its reach. So I don't know what would be an appropriate budgetary spend to get the reach that we're looking for, but I think we would be, yeah, looking some of those.
Yeah, I mean, we have, we have additional ARPA monies out there that we could utilize for that, so we don't have to take any money out of the five hundred that we've already got out there.
We could do a further twenty thousand to just tease people with it, right? Would come from, is that what you're doing?
Yeah, and the, the idea of really focusing our energies on getting the businesses to be the advocates to the consumers, because the, the door to door of the residents, we don't, we don't, most of these people are buying things on Amazon and Walmart. But the, the businesses that know their customer base, that have their social media pages, figuring out ways where we can really, you know, mobilize them and incentivize them to be able to get the word out there as our, as the advocates.
So do you have a motion?
Yeah, I move to, can I do twenty-five thousand? Yeah, move, I move to, move to authorize a release of twenty-five thousand to the Radcard program and revisit it in two weeks.
When do you want that money pushed?
Let's do it on the third. Is that third appropriate? The fourth of July? The fourth of, ah, can we have it?
Five, I think it's five, because that fourth's not a banking day, this...
I know, but do we want people to have that money when they're here on the fourth?
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, for that, for that, for that first, for that first one, I'm okay with doing, and I honestly think as, as quick as possible.
So then you want to, when, okay, let's, let's talk about today is Tuesday, so we can't get the journal before Saturday, right? So that's, that's awkward, right? So then that means we missed the parade. So unless the journal is going to, or the Bee is going to help us. As well, I don't know, is Christina out there somewhere? Let's ask Christina if she can get it out today. Hold on, it's still only this time. Talk amongst yourself, I'm getting there.
No, one suggestion, if you're looking to issue it out that quick, is maybe go out to the individuals that actually have the firework stands and try to get them to sign up.
Those are nonprofits, are they allowed?
Oh, that's a good point.
Dang it, you're killing me, Mr. Moreno.
I want more firework.
Yeah, that's something everyone tells me.
For those of us that are in the parade or, or like the extensions at least of the city, is there, how quickly, how quickly can we, can we create material to pass out to individuals that are in?
A Radcard flow, let's get it.
That are in the area. Oh, yeah, Radcard, that's cute. Yeah, I like that.
So Josh Bregram will have material, it's just a matter of pushing it out.
Right, like, but like for when we're on the parade and we're like passing out...
One side English, one side Spanish.
Yeah.
Oh, to get you a flyer?
Yeah, flyers. Yeah, that'd be, that'd be pretty cool. We have a pretty large crowd that day, memory serves, and we pass out things.
Probably not.
That's okay. Missing the first, I mean, people are already downtown. I'm assuming they're going to have to eat anyways. They're already downtown. Yeah.
All right, I'm sorry, it was your motion. What are you doing?
Yeah, twenty-five, I move to load the Radcard with twenty-five thousand as soon as determined. I'll, I'll leave it to the discretion of city management to have about most of the...
Throwing materials, not money.
I don't think we're allowed to hand anything out.
I was just going to ask that question. I was just going to ask, I don't think we're allowed to pass things out, right?
Candy.
I can't, I know you can't with candy and kids...
Free ice cream, though.
Getting run over. Can we do that?
This is a really messy council.
I know. Chief?
I, I don't know if there's any regulations about tossing the cards out. The candy's not a good idea. We don't, we don't do that. We don't do that at Christmas anymore with candy canes, because we're afraid the kids are going to run out into, into traffic. And so that's the, the only concern that comes, comes to mind, but I'm not, I'm not worried about a head injury with a piece of plastic.
Paper cuts, are they rounded?
Yeah.
Where's our risk manager?
Yeah, if, if possible, make a marketing push to align with the Fourth of July parade for all city, all city apparatuses at the flow, blah, 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 blah.
So Ms. Eddie, you, you've got a understanding what this motion is, if we're going to second and vote on it, you, you, do you know where we're going, or do you need some clarification?
I, I, I'll tell you what I think it is, and then you can confirm. So release twenty-five thousand, so it would be, the, yes, and I don't think it's hard on the finances end, we just need to get in touch with Josh so he pushes that out, and then provide some kind of a poster, I mean, like a, I don't know, a postcard, let's say, if we can, or...
One side in English, one side in Spanish.
Something like that. One side in English, one side in Spanish, to be able to give out during the parade.
And the third side...
A strong, to determine the strongest marketing push we can have on that day and going forward, because it's just, we're trying to get the word out. So, yeah, best efforts and identify whether or not we need to be working with a consultant.
Marketing director.
We got a motion. Does anybody have a second?
Second.
Okay. Will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nazrati?
Yes.
Councilmember Monas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Franco?
Yes.
Mayor Bublak?
Yes. Pass us five zero. Thank you for all watching us make sausage. All right, item O was pulled, so we are on to city manager updates, reports. What do you got there, Mr. Wilson?
Well, you have...
How about, how about we hear you?
Technology, technology gets me. You have the monthly department reports, which you've all had an opportunity to read, and if you have questions, certainly ask them of me or any of the directors who are here at your leisure. If not, I'm just going to move on and talk about homeless tonight a little bit. It's been a topic of many council meetings, and I'd like to point out that the council has in fact taken several actions of late having to do with the homeless. This one was the Agreement of Legacy Health Endowment for Respite Care, Homemaker Assistance and Other Services, Providing Long-Term Care Including People at Risk of Homelessness for Qualifying Turlock, Turlock Residents. Okay. It's a Turlock program. Secondly, authorized meaning to work with Legacy Health for an RFP for a pilot program for mobile, mobile health services to aid families in need, including the homeless. And the city would, would help us evaluate that. We actually had the RFP issued on June twenty-ninth, and so it's out there on the street. Contract proposals are due by July twenty-seventh, and we're looking for contract approval by August twenty-third. So we are in fact moving along on some of the initiatives. Secondly, we're looking at the, your Armory as a location for container homes. We've actually had a discussion with one person who does container homes. They're in fact building, building and have built a large container home project down in Merced. They have forty-eight containers near site down there. The containers are two hundred and fifty square feet in size. They typically have one bedroom, a bathroom, a kitchen, which is not a full kitchen, but a hot plate type kitchen. Okay. We think we can probably get at least twenty-four of those on the, on the Armory site, and probably more than that. But at least initially, we're talking about starting small, not getting in too deep, figuring out the things we don't know, learning from our mistakes, and then improving where we are. These would be transitional beds, people will be there three to six months. Hopefully, in that three to six months, they get drug, drug and alcohol counseling and training, and work with accounting to provide those services. The care team would be able to operate out of there. So I think it's, it's a good opportunity to really step, step up the game on count to homelessness. And I think we can do rather rapidly, so it's not like a year from now, we're still struggling with this, but we give something in place in the next three to six months. So that's, that's my report on that. Just one other thing I'd note, I've been involved with Opportunity Stanislas, they're looking to build a large multi-sport facility complex in Stanislas County. They're leading the charge. It's a four hundred and fourteen thousand square foot arena, which will be volleyball, basketball, outdoor volleyball, small soccer fields, outdoor soccer fields, sixteen basketball courts, sixteen convertible volleyball courts. They'd be for all the professional teams that like to be practicing and around in the small. Right now, they all beg for room in high schools, gyms and whatnot. They've done, done a really thorough economic analysis, and just to give you one statistic to startle me on the sideline, I saw it, was if they use it, use it over a course of a year, given all the events, they think that they would be able to book in this facility, there'd be seven hundred and fifty thousand discreet visits to that facility, which brings in about fifty-three million dollars in new income to the general area, and certainly brings in several millions of dollars of income to the...
City.
The university has a piece of ground on, on Monta Vista and Gear Road. They own about ten of the twenty-five acres that we need to do the project on, and we've been in there, part of the discussions of doing this project. So that's what we're working on. News at eleven. But it's, it's an exciting project, and it would be a really asset, big asset to the city of Turlock if we could pull it off. Okay. So I'll bring more back to you in a minute, I don't know what I can tell you. At some point, we're going to ask you to figure out how we're going to pay our share and what's going to go on.
Didn't we give you like thirty thousand to do the, the, the look at it, the assessment? I mean, isn't that all you needed? Great. Anything else?
That's it.
All right. Council item, council items for future consideration.
I actually have one. What? We'll go on. Thank you. So sidewalk program, just want to reiterate that once again. And what was mentioned earlier by Councilwoman Monas, and I've mentioned it months ago, I think it is really important that we do have these agendas, and basically all of our information that is for public consumption to be also translated to Spanish ideally, and I think it's absolutely justified based on our, the demographic study that we, was presented to us. So much amazing information within that about what our population consists of now, and it really addresses a lot of assumptions we have about our general public, that a, a lot of them, especially in certain districts of our, of our area, are primarily Spanish speakers. And it'd be great if we did have a translator here, because now since we've taken away Zoom and we don't have the, the ability for people to dial in, to have public comment, to have somebody else translate for them, when they come here, there's no way for them to do that, to address their own city council. So I think that's absolutely huge, and eventually, we need to step up and do something about it as a council. It's, it's absolutely foundational. Thank you.
Yeah, reiterating that I want to see us seeking a pro-housing designation, or at least this council have the opportunity to vote on that.
I was kind of disappointed that, that the train got pulled, but I'll address my comments for future consideration here. In regards to the train, I've been speaking with people in District Four, as well as some local businesses, and first of all, businesses really haven't been, haven't had a huge option one way or the other about where the train is located. My constituents in District Four have been informing me that they would rather see it at the current location because it's... My constituents in District Four have been informing me that they would rather see it at the current location because it's closer for them to, to catch the train there at the fairgrounds. The third thing that I've been considering is the cost for the new environmental impact reports and other reports that we were, the city of Turlock would be required to do to the tune of about two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand dollars in the current economic climate. I'm really hesitant to spend that kind of money because I think it would take years to recoup. And I know I was one of the advocates for moving the train. I don't want to jeopardize losing the train station over trying to move it. So I haven't made up my mind totally, but I wanted to let city manager and staff know that I'm, I'm hesitant on moving forward with the relocation of the station. So I, for future consideration, I know you're gonna be.
Got it.
Bringing it to the council. So there you go.
Items for future consideration.
Okay. And then questions, comments and announcements? Nothing? Councilman?
I comment as it pertains to this sports complex. I think like we just want us to be really strong advocates for the community that it's gonna be serving because one of the things that I see a lot from cities across the board is they, we do a lot to try and appeal to large scale developments, whether it's a stadium or sports complex like this. And the actual impact to the residents of that community aren't great. So finding ways that this development can create public benefit outside of, you know, access to a, a for-profit business to them, that's potentially gonna be in my district. I was talking about the idea of, you know, if they're gonna do something great and huge like that, make it so that there is a, a public park nestled into this space, you know, twenty-two acres that is accessible to the residents that are within walking distance or some, something creative where we're really strong advocates for the, the residents of the community first and foremost.
I'm sorry, I forgot. Thanks Andrew for reminding me. Who here knows what pro, professional sports team we have in our city? Does everyone know that we have one? Yeah? Okay, we have a pro, yeah? We have a pro indoor soccer team here. I think it'd be great to get them involved with this, this conversation and see if there's an opportunity to highlight them. I know that they're, they're cur facility. It gets the job done, but it deserves attention because they're a great team. They are very good at what they do. They bring home wins. And if there's an opportunity here to have a part of a brand new sports facility in some way, I think that'd be pretty amazing. So just wanted to come to that.
Yes. Wanted to remind everyone, the Fourth of July parade is actually on July second, Saturday. Please show up, support Turlock. Saturday's downtown farmer's market. It's a wonderful farmer's market. I was just in Long Beach and went to a couple of their farmer's markets. Turlock beats theirs hands down. We have a fabulous farmer's market. Don't forget the canine dinner, fajita dinner. Get your tickets July twenty-second. And welcome back, Mr. Madden and Mr. Silvera.
Yeah, well said. I can't wait to give Mr. Lieutenant Silvera some grief over that decision. Hey, this sports complex, I don't know who's coming into the kitty on that deal because this is the first I've heard of it, but it's very welcomed news. We desperately need it. And the first thing that comes to my mind is can we, you know, fandangle it or manipulate it to where the Turlock schools can get preference? Because I know so many of our schools, including our private schools, don't have gym space and they're fighting for it and it's just not there. I know that for a couple of our schools, sports actually got canceled in the fall because there was no gym space or volleyball courts.
I would say just to respond to that is that they're, they're at a conceptual stage now. Okay, so I think all those opportunities that you've talked about tonight are on the table and certainly I'll advocate for those things from, from a city of Turlock perspective.
Outstanding.
Are there fireworks this year?
Ask the city, the college?
The college said no.
Okay, and then finally, you might not all see this, but we actually have tabbing thanks to our city clerk. So when we hit something, boom, it just shows up on the agenda. Pretty cool. Like, I, I'm like, keep doing it just because it's fun. You're awesome. Eric, how did you get such a nice day on that third Thursday music thing? That was amazing weather at first time. It worked out really well. Thank you. Kudos to you and the, the staff. That was a great event. Can't wait for the next Thursday, third Thursday for everyone to get out there expecting the same weather though, just saying. Carnegie just had a, a kind of a pop-up event and it turned out really well. And then they have another art thing coming up, so look into that. The parade, looking forward to that. And you guys make sure, you know, you get a chance to go get cool ice cream and in a cool room and see the history of this city right there, just around the corner off of Main. That's gonna be amazing on center. And then one other thing. Oh. Somebody was talking about, oh, Mr. Trueller was talking about that they're gonna be closing part of the facility shelter. When this has happened previously, we've had a big tent for them for that time because we knew that they were gonna, they're, they were gonna stay there. So hopefully when we hire back Mark Gomes, he knows about it and we could take care of that so that it doesn't inconvenience as many people for that. Just food for thought. And I'm gonna ask that we do that DA, let's, let's start it with the, the planning commission. Let's see what's going on with this marijuana stuff. And ask the planning commission as well to look at coming up with new ordinances regarding what landscaping we do, ask people to put when we do businesses and everything because we're, we gotta start focusing on the fact that we're never gonna have water. And so putting all this shrubbery that requires so much water is kinda silly. All right, we have closed session.
Okay, for closed session tonight, item A is public employee performance evaluation, California Government Code five four nine five seven B one. Title, city manager. For item B, conference with labor negotiators, California Government Code five four nine five seven point six A, agency designated representative, deputy city manager Sarah Eddy. Employee organization is the Turlock Management Association Public Safety and Turlock Firefighters Association Local twenty-four thirty-four.
All right, and we will come and report out should we have anything. Thank you all for coming.
All right, we're back from closed session and we have nothing to report out, so we will adjourn now until the next meeting of the twenty-something. Thank you.
Happy Birthday!
It's a form of, um...
Big one.
Yeah.
Please give us four big ones.
Gentlemen, have a good birthday, July. Have a good birthday.